We're going to try to watch it.
Surprise Daniels isn't here. He's just.
I couldn't see it.
You walk through those buildings?
No, don't worry about it. We'll watch it.
Good morning, everybody. We will call the Community Redevelopment Agency for May 17th to order. I would ask if there are any amendments to the minutes of the April 12th, 2021 meeting?
Move approval of the minutes as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post unanimous. This time, I'd like to open it up to citizens to be heard. If there are any citizens in the audience, there's only one. Do you want to talk, Festus?
I don't know.
Okay. No citizens to be heard, item 4.1. Mr. Hubbard, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, CRA trustees, city managers, staff and citizens. I am Christopher Hubbard, Cultural Affairs Coordinator, here representing the city's Community Redevelopment Agency. This morning's item for your consideration is a request to approve a program budget of $500,000, allowing CRA staff to move forward with developing a three-year exhibition and placemaking program based on the work of internationally renowned photographer Clyde Butcher. This opportunity is a direct outgrowth of the success of the Dreams of Dali virtual reality exhibit, which, over the course of its six-month run, drew more than 4,600 visitors to downtown. Staff is pursuing a partnership to leverage the work of Mr. Butcher, another well-known and widely accessible artist, to draw residents and visitors to downtown. Known as the Ansel Adams of the Everglades, Butcher's work has become synonymous with Florida's natural beauty, attracting thousands of visitors wherever it is on display. It has been featured in the Florida Botanical Gardens in Naples, as well as the Boca Raton Library, and a number of other locations at which they have had events to capacity at those spots. As rationale for supporting this request, the 2018 Downtown Redevelopment Plan and the CRA's 2021 to 2023 strategy call for investment in cultural amenities in a way that reduces vacancy and provides free, family-friendly entertainment options. As demonstrated with Dreams of Dali, arts exhibitions have a track record of success in attracting residents and visitors who then stay to dine and shop in local businesses. They are also attractive activities for hot or rainy days during the peak of summer, both of which we have in abundance. And with the renovation of Coachman Park and the Streetscape Phase III project, there is a critical need to provide a space for high-quality community engagement activities to take place. CRAs would be used for design and construction costs to create a suitable space for exhibition. Funds will also be allocated to gallery operations, including staffing, utilities and physical costs, artist fees, marketing and programming costs over the course of the three-year exhibition. This exhibition brings with it the opportunity for an array of potential outreach programs, from lectures on Florida's environment and sustainability practices to the exhibition of artworks inspired by Mr. Butcher's photography. Additionally, the Everglades National Park will be celebrating its 75th anniversary in 2022, coinciding with the run of the exhibition and opening the door for additional programming options. This all comes at an opportune time, as in recent survey of Tampa Bay residents on awareness and sentiment towards downtown Clearwater, early data suggests a desire for programming focused on sustainability and environmental education. Many of these elements are still in the planning phases, and establishing a program budget is the next step in moving forward with the agreements and infrastructure necessary in bringing the exhibition online. We do have a deadline for action. The CRA has until July 1st to finalize a location for the exhibit before the work will be released to other locations. The CRA hereby requests your approval by establishing a program budget of $500,000. I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Any questions for Mr. Hubbard? Councilmember Beckman.
So, in brief, thank you for all that information, that extra information, that was good.
We anticipate having it open at least three days a week, and during daytime hours that visitors could come during the day, also opening it up to schools.
Great. And then the $500,000 budget right now, it's, well, I'm wondering, the building photos that you showed us, so I know we don't own that Walgreens, right? So, are you, are there other costs for renting a building?
Depending upon the.
If we don't own it?
Depending upon the space, the rent would be included in the $500,000. However, since this presentation, we have been examining having it here at the library, in the atrium and cafe space, as well as the Carnegie and Osceola Galleries. This would relieve the need for a rent, allowing for more funds to be dedicated towards programming.
Okay, okay, good. Because it would be a significant chunk of money to rent it someplace for three years.
Correct. The advantage, obviously, of a city-owned space is that we can avoid that. Preference definitely going towards city-owned, because the investments that are put into that space do stay within the city.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Albreton.
Picking back in on what you just said, Chris, it seems to me, spending a little money to create the space in the library, because I was a little concerned when you said, Councilmember Beckman asked about, you know, students being able to come on a field trip, and you said, "Well, we might be open three days a week." If we can create the space in the library, the library's open more than three days a week, and gives a lot more opportunity with, other than the construction costs, we're done. So, I would definitely encourage staff to look at the library as being the proper location for it. Other than that, you know, the $500,000 is a, from my understanding, the $500,000 is a top-line number. If we don't spend it all, it becomes available for other things, so.
Yes, sir. And if we cannot secure facility by July 1, those funds would be eligible to support other programs staying within the CRA's budget.
Chris, how many pieces are going to be in the exhibit?
There are about 25 that are part of the full collection, and we would anticipate having the entire collection here, the advantage of having all of those pieces in one space. These are large-format photos, mostly being larger than three foot. So, there's an advantage to having that extra gallery space to accommodate the entire collection.
And you showed the warehouse on Franklin as a potential site.
Yes.
I don't know where we, I mean, we're talking with PSTA, we're going to make that surplus today, actually, citywide away from the CRA, but, I mean, I don't know when PSTA is expecting to want to really take ownership of that building. Other question about that building is, you know, I don't think it's ADA compliant, obviously. That could be pretty costly to get that building up to ADA, whereas the Walgreens, uncertain is, and obviously, the library is. What about security?
Well, if we need extra security, we can take from programming budget to support that, within the existing $500,000. We want to make sure that the work is safe and secure. If it is here in the library, it does prove to be feasible, we will allow for extra locking mechanisms, making sure that that space is closed off at the end of the day. For other facilities, like the Walgreens or the warehouse property, we would look into what would be necessary to add additional security to that, but definitely looking towards the existing facilities here at the library. Because the future of the warehouse is uncertain, because we're not sure of if PSTA would allow us to be in that space in the interim from their ownership towards construction, we definitely are looking into a space that we would have access to on a known timeline, rather than waiting for them to allow us to or have a finite timeframe.
I mean, I want this to have a positive impact on downtown, and I think that's what we have to kind of look at, where the location is in proximity to everything else that matters. Also, access, and then whether we're going to have docents or, you know, are we going to need more security? Mr. Del, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I think Amanda, before she went out on leave, had had some conversation with the library. I think the library is very enthusiastic about accommodating the work here, and that will reduce the cost and simplify the process a great deal. So, I think it might be a moot point. I think it probably is likely to end up here at the library will be a much more manageable and accessible situation for it.
Do we know what that'll reduce the budget to, then? Half a million dollars is not a small sum.
A fraction. I think a lot of that was build-out, right? So, it'll be, obviously, we won't have a build-out issue.
The most expansive was 250,000. That was at the warehouse, which had no current amenity inside of it, having to make it ADA accessible and providing for access to parking. So, it will be under 250,000, with the bulk remaining going towards programming and access to the site.
And how much are we paying the collection to have it here for three years?
That I will have to look up for you. I don't have, we have currently an agreement with them, holding the space, and I would have to look at the artist fee for that. I can get that back to you.
Okay. Councilmember Beckman.
Is the artist fee included in the 500,000?
Yes.
Or you just don't know which part of it? I mean, that's fine. I think it's a good thing to put it here for a few reasons. I think, number one, we're already paying for space and utilities for this building. We don't have to renovate it, right? It's open a whole bunch of hours. And I think it would be good to have people coming in over the next three years to see those photographs, and also look out and see what's going on with Imagine Clearwater. So, that's kind of cool. But then, with Imagine Clearwater construction going on, will they have enough parking and ease of, you know, coming in and out of here? I mean, it should be fine. All that other construction is down lower by the bluff, or by the waterfront? Should be okay, right?
I would hope so. Mr. Del, do you know?
Yeah, most of the parking up on the bluff, I think, will be intact for a while, so. I mean, parking is going to change down here. There's little we can do about that in the short term, but the library will still be open, accessible. There'll be parking available in the area, so.
Councilmember Albreton.
Yeah, I think the library is the place to do it, because the original library build-out that we were talking about, and then we've kind of nixed because of the cost, had an art gallery. And, you know, Imagine Clearwater is going to be open before, I mean, this will still be here when that's open. So, to me, it's just a, you know, it's perfect to have it here, drawing people down here and making it, you know, an active edge here, so. I think if we can do that and save the build-out money, but bring Clyde Butcher here would be a great thing.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm fully supportive. I think it's a great location for it. I was worried, looking at the two properties that you had photographed here, especially the warehouse, that most of that $500,000 would be spent on just getting that space ready. So, if we can put it here, that's great.
Yeah, I support it being here over the other sites. I wish we had a little bit tighter budget of a little more line item going forward for items like this. I think a little more information would have been good going forward. I'd be asking for that, otherwise, I'm going to ask to continue an item. So, anyone from the public to speak to this item? Have a motion.
I move to approve Agenda Item 4.1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post unanimous, 4.2.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, the purpose of this item is to authorize the use of the CRA funds toward the construction costs of three capital improvement projects identified in the 2018 Downtown Redevelopment Plan. CRA has reserved funds for the projects for several years as part of the capital improvement budgeting process. The adjunct item will result in the transfer of funding from the CRA project funds to city project funds, and a full description of the projects and the approval of the construction will be considered by city council at the meeting on May 20. The three components of this improvement project is wayfinding, which will be installed throughout downtown as part of the citywide wayfinding program. The CRA budgeted a total of $500,000 as a contribution for this program fiscal years 2018 and 19, and is now seeking to transfer those funds from the CRA to the city. The next component is the Streetscape Phase III and the Mercado. The Streetscape project will result in complete renovation of Cleveland Street from Missouri to South Highland Avenue, including wider sidewalks, bicycle lanes, on-street parking and enhanced landscaping. In addition, the CRA budgeted $1 million as a contribution for the streetscaping project, as well as $500,000 of which to the construction of the Mercado in the East Gateway area. So, these are three projects that will continue the city's investment in downtown. I think it will expand some of our commercial retail footprint in the Mercado area and make with the construction of the Mercado a destination at the east end of downtown in its own right. So, with that, we would recommend your approval of the transfer of these funds to the city.
Questions for Mr. Del? Councilmember Beckman.
I have a question about the budgeted total of 500,000 as a contribution for the wayfinding program, just for the downtown area in the CRA boundaries. So, on an agenda item for our regular work session, we talk about wayfinding throughout the whole city. And so, it's our discretion to take this 500,000 from CRA funds to put towards a citywide wayfinding program.
Well, those funds need to be spent in the CRA, so this is our contribution to the city's wayfinding program in the CRA area. Technically, those funds cannot leave the CRA to be expended elsewhere.
Right. But those funds could be used for something other than signage that we're going to be putting as part of the citywide wayfinding program, right? We could have used them for other.
Clearly, anything within the CRA.
Can be used for anything within the CRA, yeah. Okay. And I don't remember off the top of my head that budget item on the regular agenda, like, how much of a contribution this is. Do you remember, is this like 25% or 20%?
You know, I don't know.
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter. It's just.
Yeah, it's.
It's almost half?
Yeah.
Just for the CRA boundaries?
Yes. I mean, it's a fairly comprehensive wayfinding program. In fact, the city did a wayfinding citywide study, so this is an important component of it.
I have questions on that regular agenda item about wayfinding in, how much wayfinding do we have out throughout the neighborhoods, aside from the downtown CRA area, for other neighborhood parks and different things that, you know, residents would be going to outside of the CRA? So, I just, I just think, you know, our CRA area has a lot of needs, and to allocate this much money for signage here, when it's a city, our contribution for signage is, is just, you know, something I, it struck me as quite a bit. And then the other thing, I have a question about the Streetscape Phase III and the Mercado. So, that first allocation, this has almost doubled. So, why do we have a doubling of that budget from the first allocation? You know, so, my question I have in my notation is, what was the $500,000 supposed to cover in the first part, and now we're at, you know, we're allocating another 437, almost $438,000, and what's the timeline for getting started and getting it completed?
Well, let me, on the timeline, let me refer you to Kat, if you can talk about the timeline for the project. I think we've done some property acquisition in the East Gateway area, so there have been some prior expenditures related to the, this program.
My name is Kat Forkren, Senior Landscape Architect with Engineering. I'm going to repeat your question back to you, make sure I've got it.
Okay.
Talk louder.
Yeah, or move your microphone. We can't hear.
How about this?
That's good.
No, louder.
Still louder?
Yeah.
Okay. I believe your question is, what was the original $500,000 supposed to cover, and how did we get to needing an additional 450?
Yeah, yeah.
Originally, the 500,000 was hopefully anticipated to cover everything, soup to nuts, as they call it, design, construction, the full program that we had designed, and that turned out to be incredibly overly optimistic, especially in this very unpredictable construction cost market that we're existing in. The CRA does fully support the overall mission of the Cleveland Street Phase III and the Mercado itself, so they felt that they saw value in contributing additional funding so that we can move forward. Does that answer your question?
I guess. I mean, I just, you know, I notice as, you know, I do my work here as a council member, that frequently, people are coming back to ask for more money. You know, it's overly optimistic, or we didn't account for this or that, and, you know, I think of my own life, if I have a contractor come in and do something, and then says, "Oh, sorry, double the cost after I signed it and got started," that's not pleasant. But, I mean, does it have anything to do with the increase in construction costs related to COVID?
It certainly has something to do with it. I can't quantify, like, what percentage of this overage is solely due to that.
Councilmember Albreton.
Yeah, we've been talking about these wayfinding signs probably for 12 years. I mean, in downtown, since the original wayfinding went in and everybody was disappointed with it. So, I just wanted to make that comment. It's not something new that's come up. I mean, it's finally, if we're going to be doing it, that'd be nice after 10 or 12 years to finally get something that points people down to our downtown, because we took the downtown off the main route, and part of the comment was, "Where's the downtown?" Because you could zip right through 60 and go right to the beach. A lot of people didn't know where we were, so not only the, mostly all the merchants and everybody need to have that to show people where it is.
Other questions or comments? I mean, the wayfinding is a big number. Our current wayfinding signs are not worn out, are they, in downtown? Are we trying to get consistency throughout the entire city?
Yes, and we included in there, I think, the study with the wayfinding program that we did included US-19. It included various districts of the city from downtown to the beach, and then US-19 corridor. It had unique application of a consistent style to all of those areas. So, it's a pretty comprehensive plan that we developed. And, you know, wayfinding signage, I think there's more than you think in terms of the infrastructure and the expense associated with that. Clearly, as these projects continue to, as they get drawn out inherently, we pay a price for that in terms of cost. So, you know, I think all these projects have been kind of out there for a while, and waiting on various components of them to move forward, and, you know, the streetscaping and the reconstruction of that's more challenging, I think, as Kat alluded to, so. It's, it is, it does have some expense with it, certainly.
I do have mixed feelings about it, looking through it all. I mean, we do have diagrams throughout the city where all the wayfinding signs are going. Some of them, I think, are perhaps unnecessary, like on the pedestrian bridges, say, "This is Clearwater." I don't know that we need to do that. I mean, wayfinding nowadays, it's good to tell people that things exist that they may not be aware of, but most people use these for wayfinding. And it is a big number. I get having consistency, but I don't always understand replacing something that is not yet worn out. And, I mean, I remember when we did our first wayfinding in downtown, but I'm going to probably support this, but I question whether it's a really great use of our funds. As far as the Mercado goes, I think we need to be more careful. I would rather estimate higher, rather than coming back with enormous increases. I think it undermines credibility for the city, frankly. I believe in being optimistic, but I also believe in being realistic. And, you know, when we see an increase like this, I just, I think it hurts credibility. Mr. Moore?
Mayor, I was just going to comment, following up on Councilmember Albreton's comment. Our experience with wayfinding is a little bit like beauty is in the eye of the beholder, and over the time, the 12 years, like what you were talking about, I think part of the comments made this morning is a reflection of what we've experienced. Some people really value the wayfinding and think it's absolutely essential to get people where we want them to go. Others are not as worried about it. I think your comments about the wayfinding and the phones, I mean, clearly, we've seen a technological impact there. So, we're just trying to be responsive to all of the feedback that we've received, both from residents, citizens and council members. So, I think the intent was, maybe we can finally come up with a wayfinding system that will actually, you know, at least 80 or 90% of it, get us to where we want to go. It's clearly not perfect, but it is certainly much more comprehensive than we've ever done.
Vice Mayor.
Well, does, I guess another question is, does the $500,000 for wayfinding, how far out does that project? Because as Imagine Clearwater gets built, and hopefully, we are able to construct a new parking garage in downtown that hasn't been constructed yet, do we have to change all the wayfinding signs, or are we going to have, is future wayfinding part of this 500,000, or is this strictly for today's Clearwater?
It's for today's Clearwater. However, we did raise the height of some of the poles so that additional wayfinding panels could be added in the field without having to dismantle and refabricate.
Councilmember Beckman.
I have a comment about wayfinding. I'm a huge proponent for wayfinding. I think it, you know, it encourages people to walk and move about. I think it lends an air of real friendliness and sense of community in an area. I'm all for wayfinding downtown, but again, out to those neighborhood parks, a sense of community and uniformity is good as well. But I would say, if we've been looking at this for 12 years, one of the things I would think is, you know, have we reached out to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board or the Environmental Advisory Board and asked those residents, "What do you think about wayfinding out in your neighborhoods or in your areas, or what would you want to direct people to the hidden treasures in your part of Clearwater?" And I don't know that we've, you know, done that, not to increase this budget, but that sense of wayfinding should be throughout the city, and not just, "Let's get more people, you know, downtown. We have more than downtown."
Yeah, Phase 1, it's, the lion's share is within the CRA district, certainly. There are things like the Historic Plum House, the Horseshoe Club, very localized neighborhood features are also included in Phase 1.
Some people don't want their neighborhood parks to be known, frankly.
Yeah, I.
That's absolutely true, Councilmember Beckman. They believe it's their neighborhood park, and it's a neighborhood park, not a regional park. Would you agree with that?
I would completely agree. Councilmember Beckman, the focus of the wayfinding has been really to get people from US-19 into the downtown. There was no focus on building in wayfinding to the outlying neighborhoods in other parts of the city. That doesn't mean that you can't do it, but that's not what this effort has been focused around. You can certainly build on it, and I think when you do that, getting the neighborhood input as to whether they want their neighborhoods included in wayfinding would be a critical element. But we should not do it just arbitrarily, because, as the mayor said, there are some neighborhoods that really don't want to be discovered.
Well, I would say with people moving in, you know, every single day, new residents, new families, I mean, I just, I think. new families, I mean, I just, I think, I would, you know, some difference of opinion.
Councilmember Bunker?
Back in San Diego, where I lived for 10 years, there, there are, uh, signs for neighborhoods similar to what, uh, we're proposing to put on 19, just announcing, hey, Clearwater. It, it, there is a charm to driving into a neighborhood and seeing Kensington, which was one of the nice, uh, little neighborhoods there, or, um, but they were put in, you know, back in the 30s and 40s and there's the charm of that. I'm not sure that we really need a big Clearwater sign on 19 to let people know, hey, you're in Clearwater. Um, it, it is a lot of money to be spending on, on signage, um, but I appreciate the, the scope of what's trying to be accomplished to, uh, to get people down here.
Anyone from the public to speak to this item?
Yeah.
Councilmember Beckman?
Thank you. I guess just to get a, a big perspective. So if we're going to allocate 500,000 from our CRA account, um, for wayfinding within our CRA boundaries, what's our ledger? What's our account total for CRA right now? Like, what, what are we subtracting 500,000 dollars from?
I'm sorry, I, I think I came up to answer a different question about where they are. Um, you-
That's really where Mr. Del questioned. She wants to know what our overall budget looks like and how much we have in reserve, I think.
What kind of depth is this putting into it?
Well, I think one of the, uh, initial, uh, problems with having me here and not the CRA director is, uh, the institutional knowledge of those accounts. So, uh, I, my recollection is that we have or generate around a million, a million and a half a year or something in our, in our, in terms of our revenues. So, um, that we're available, but I, you know, I'd need to confirm those account numbers with you. Um, but I, you know, wayfinding is a, you know, for particularly for a coastal community like us that has a enormous, uh, you know, number of visitors as well as the public. I think, you know, we want to have a consistent application to our city's wayfinding program. We want to be comprehensive and inclusive, uh, with some of our key economic development areas and zones. So, uh, I think, you know, uh, wayfinding can get, become dated over time, number one. Number two, uh, wayfinding program designed specifically for downtown, uh, in the, uh, in the early 2000s may not necessarily have, uh, the kind of broad applicability that we want to tie together 19 and downtown and the beaches and that sort of thing. So, uh, it's one of the reasons we embarked on a more comprehensive approach and evaluation of our wayfinding program. Uh, you know, when we look at where to implement that, we, we, uh, you know, I guess at least in terms of the CRA, obviously prioritize getting that infrastructure in place downtown, hopefully ultimately tying it to the beaches and then, uh, 19 as well. So, uh, you know, I think if you look at communities, uh, they will typically want to have a, uh, you know, a comprehensive wayfinding program, particularly communities like us. So this is a chance to really modernize and, uh, and upgrade our wayfinding system, uh, on a more comprehensive basis rather than just the downtown area. Uh, and these things are expandable over time. We have a template, uh, we have a consistent approach, so we can certainly, we can apply that in the future to expand it as the city so chooses.
Would we have, um, like lower on the pole, a little sign or something that you would put your phone up to for more information? One of those codes that you could, uh, because like the Jolly Trolley has that where you can scan your phone. I mean, those kinds of things, just as you increase pedestrians walking around, it's like, oh, we're going down to the, you know, museum or something. Let me put my phone here and find out the actual hours and-
I, you know, I don't know if that's inherently incorporated on it, but-
Mm-hmm. You could probably do it in the future, you know?
Those things are doable.
Yeah.
Uh, this may not be a part of our initial plan, but, you know, if you, if you direct then, then we can-
Mm-hmm.
They're not uncommon.
No.
Well, we've grouped all this into one item. Uh, seems to be the wayfinding may be the, um, sticking point. I think we need to move forward with the streetscape and the Mercado. Uh, that's been a long time in going. I don't know how everybody feels.
I'm okay approving both. I can make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion to approve Agenda Item 4.2.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous. 4.3.
Good morning. Rosemary DeMore, the Public Relations and Programs Manager for the CRA. Um, so today, um, we're asking to approve an amendment, uh, between the CRA and Amplify Clearwater's original agreement, um, to produce and manage downtown Clearwater events through December 31st, 2021, and authorize appropriate officials to execute the same. Um, in March of 2020, the CRA entered into an agreement with Amplify Clearwater to produce 10 events of varying size and scope throughout this fiscal year. Um, as everyone is well aware, uh, shortly after we signed that agreement, the way we do events, uh, how we do events, if we do events, changed dramatically as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. So the first portion of this amendment, we are asking to extend, um, the timeframe for this agreement from originally September 30th, the end of thi- this fiscal year to December 31st, uh, the end of this calendar year. Um, we have currently had over five events, um, take place or are currently underway and in planning process. We're confident we can reach that 10 event number by the end of this year. We've already had some requests for events to happen in November of this year, for instance. And then the second portion of this amendment, we're asking to remove the requirement for a large-scale, multi-thousand-person event this year. We've seen how quickly things can change. We're not saying we couldn't do an event of that size, but we're not entirely sure that that's something that's feasible this calendar year, again, as a result of the pandemic. So I'm happy to answer questions if anybody has.
Questions?
No.
I have questions.
Councilmember Beckman?
Um, so I had a, um, question about the money dispersed, $20,000 to date for event planning, staff time, et cetera, and then 10,000 for marketing events. So, you know, what's the distinction, um, between marketing and planning and staff time? Marketing, is that like securing digital ads and, and printing and things like that?
Yeah, so their staff time, they have a specific person who's dedicated to this project. Her name is Sydney at Amplify Clearwater, um, that the cost for, uh, staff time goes to her. And then marketing would be for Facebook ads, for, uh, running print ads, things like that.
Okay. So we have, the first part, the events executed or currently underway, was 11,500 in staff time and 1,200 in marketing for that first part. And then we have remaining funds for these other events. Um, so now we have 8,500 for marketing the last four events, when we had only 1,500 for marketing those first six, and 8,500 for event planning and producing for these remaining ones. Um, so I don't see that that, it doesn't look like balanced, so I was wondering about that.
So any funds that are not spent will be returned to the CRA at the end of the agreement?
Okay, so they just weren't necessary? Okay. And then I'm just a little concerned about variety in the events, because I see the two kind of chalk events up at the top, and then we have another Choctoberfest. I mean, do you want to keep that an annual event and bring people back and build?
Mm-hmm. So the events that are currently in planning process for later this year, those are tentative. We can kind of tweak those or alter those. We've had, um, just in the last few weeks, a request for an event for Sangria Festival later this year, um, an event with the Clearwater Young Professionals in November of this year. Um, we've had a request for, uh, Fitness and Wellness Day. So we can really kind of tweak those depending on, um, what the response has been. But we also have not seen, we opened, had an open call for ideas that we released last summer for event ideas, which was also a challenge because of the environment we were in. Um, so we had, didn't have a lot of event ideas come through. Now people are kind of starting to think of things they'd like to do and approaching us with those ideas.
And it seems like the events are kind of adult-focused, much more than family or kids. Is that, that's intentional?
Uh, we can also tweak that as well. If we want to have a specific family-focused event, the scope that we have currently, we want to do specific arts events, um, specific, uh, small-scale events, but we have not necessarily put a specific audience in place for those. But if you'd like that to be a direction that we take, we can do that.
Other questions? How are you coordinating with DCMA and Ruth Eckerholm with Capital Theater and others to make sure that we're not stepping on one another's toes, that there are synergies here?
Mm-hmm. So our, uh, Business Assistance Administrator, Howard Smith, attends DCMA meetings each month. Um, he's regularly updating folks about the events that we have happening. We loop the DCMA in on any events that are occurring. The Market Marie, for instance, last week, which was our first farmers' market in downtown in a few years, um, we invited folks from the DCMA to attend that. We had two restaurants actually come out to be vendors at the space. Um, so we're trying to keep people informed and if we know of events that are going to be occurring, trying to find synergies and partnerships there.
Yeah, just want to make sure we coordinate.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Other questions?
Could we give some direction to, in, you know, have you look at more family-focused, uh, a couple of events that would bring families or children downtown? Maybe, I was thinking like, you know, improv night or music, any kind of music? Um, I don't know if that's super expensive and that's why that's not here, but-
Okay. Well, and we want to encourage folks, the open call for ideas is still open, so folks can go to downtownclearwater.com and submit their event idea. We kind of work with them to see, number one, is the event feasible? Do we have enough time with our special events team to make sure they can be permitted properly, kind of going through all of those steps. So that, that event, um, open call is still open.
Okay.
People can still submit their ideas.
Anyone from the public to speak to this item? Have a motion?
Move to approve Item 4.3. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous. 4.4.
Michael, you're going to read the agenda item title?
Oh, yes. Approve a contract for purchase of real property located at 701 Franklin Street between the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Clearwater and the City of Clearwater City for the purchase price of 525,000 dollars and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same, together with all other instruments required to affect closing.
Thank you, Mr. Del. Good morning, Agency. Michael Fauno, CRA attorney. This agenda item asks for authority to execute a sales contract between the CRA and the city for the property located at 701 Franklin Street to fulfill the, um, intent of the RFP that was issued in April. Uh, the purchase price is the acquisition price the CRA paid back in 2019. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Fauno? Anyone from the public to speak to this item? Have a motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.4. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous. 4.5.
Authorize the CRA Executive Director to prepare an agreement for the development and sale of the property at 115 South Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue and the adjoining vacant lot for the purposes identified in RFP D S Q 2521. Good morning again, Michael Fauno. Uh, Agency, the, on the, um, the director received a letter of interest, uh, for the property and then we purchased, uh, we sent out a RFP on March 17th of this year for the, uh, roughly one acre warehouse site, which is what we normally call it. Uh, the RFP asked for, um, proposals for restaurant, microbrewery, creative office space or similar use. We received one proposal from Equity, representative is here. The, uh, major, uh, terms of the proposal are to, um, redevelop the site into 11,000 square feet of creative office spacing, 4,500 square feet of microbrewery restaurant spacing, as well as 35 apartment units, which will be offered at market rate. Uh, the Equity is proposing a 625,000 dollar acquisition fee, which is about the fair market value of the property. There is, there has been a 250,000 dollar incentive that has been set aside by the CRA over the last couple of years for development of the site, uh, specifically with respect to green space that's located on it. The proposal calls for that, you know, incentive to essentially preserve the green space and the mature trees that are there and to make it more of a neighborhood and community gathering space. So that'll be a, uh, point of negotiation in the development agreement. Um, the Equity has a 25% cash equity that they will put into the place with remaining coming from, uh, three lenders that they have. The, um, the executive director, myself, and the, uh, assistant director of planning, Matt, to review the proposal. Um, we all agree that it shouldn't go forward. So what we ask for now is the, uh, Agency to approve the proposal and to authorize the director and myself to, um, negotiate a development agreement, which we will bring you for you over the next few months. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If there's any questions for the, um, applicant, he's here as well.
Questions for Mr. Fauno or Mr. Del or the applicant? Councilmember Beckman?
Probably for the applicant, um, about Cohatch. So your, your PowerPoint presentation was, um, really intriguing and interesting. It sounds great.
What was the question, ma'am?
Oh, I was, thought I was waiting for him to get keyed up. Oh, um, well, the question is, so on your introduction to Cohatch page, it sounds like it's a real inclusive, nurturing, kind of mentoring philosophy here. And I'm thinking about the fact that you have market rate rents, and I'm wondering, you know, what can we do to get, you know, more workforce housing, um, level rents there? And I was wondering if your configuration of your apartments could be something like three bedrooms, three bath to encourage roommates, which would, you know, lower the rent for people rather than like a three-bedroom, one-bath kind of a place?
Good morning, um, Bruce Heisler with Equity. Um, I'm the Development Officer for the state of Florida for our company. To your point, we just put together an initial layout with primarily studio and one-bedroom apartments with, you know, a handful of two-bedroom and three-bedrooms. So, you know-
It's mostly first singles.
We wanted, we started with that, but it's, you know, it's still subject to, you know, design. It was just our initial design for the, for the RFP. Um, in terms of Cohatch, uh, founded in 2016 in Columbus, Ohio, um, live, work, play environment. Uh, they've got, um, currently, they're in seven cities, Tampa, Tampa currently, but we, like, by way of example, Greater Tampa area, we're doing five of these. So, Tampa, downtown, or, I'm sorry, just outside, South Tampa, um, Clearwater, Lakeland, St. Pete, um, and one in Tarpit Springs. So they like, um, in terms of their business models, they like redevelopment buildings instead of drowned up. Uh, but in this case, we could take what we've got and tweak it.
I mean, it just helps with housing expenses, right?
I'm sorry?
It offers more variety. Helps with housing expenses if you can have-
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, the, the goal here is to live, work, play. I mean, you could walk down from your apartment, go to work and then have lunch and or dinner and never have to leave. So, and there, the, the slate is, you know, for the next 10 years, they want to do 100 of these. What's really cool about it is, if you remember, it's kind of like Delta, the Delta Mile Program, if you get your Delta card, if you're a member, anywhere in the country where they, you know, where they have these, you can go and work there as part of the program.
Uh, I had a question on, on the second page about introduction to Cohatch. You have a statement that says impacting nonprofits, supporting local nonprofits to increase their collective impact and provide scholarships when needed. I don't know, can you explain what that means? What does it mean to support, uh, local nonprofits?
Cohatch is a Christian-based program for that, they're, they're heavily involved in church and, you know, follow, uh, Christianity as it relates to things. They're not, uh, church, but, you know, they, they set, um, uh, programs in place for, you know, folks in need, you know, in parts of the country where they're at. Like in Columbus, big, you know, big outreach program up there to help folks in need. So they get back to the community.
So they make donations as a corporation? They make donations to nonprofits? That what, that's what it means?
Correct.
It doesn't mean anything in that building there that's going to be-
No.
Okay. And so the same thing with social enterprise. What is social enterprise and second chance employment? That's, that's all the philanthropic thing the company does.
Correct.
It has nothing to do with what's on our property in Clearwater.
That's correct. Everything's outside there.
Okay. Um, yeah, okay. Yeah. And then this is going to be just a little, you know, um, touchy and it's not directed specifically at you, but one of the things that I'm beginning to notice as a council member when contracts and things come before us, and this is more for a strategic planning discussion probably, but, you know, since we've got it right in front of us. but, you know, since we've got it right in front of us, on the two pages about the project team introduction, you know, when we look at all the names of the people involved with this whole thing, including our names here that are members of the council, you know, there are 40 names and seven of them are women, it seems to be, you know, if we just go with kind of gender-specific names traditionally. So I just, I tend to look, yeah, I'm looking at things like diversity and, you know, who are we contracting with and are there, is there diversity in the people we do business with?
What's the proper ratio?
I don't know what the proper ratio is, but I think it's, it's a little bit more than 40 to seven when 50% of the population is female. And then you compare the projected rent and income structure page, you've got rent that you've compared to the Nolan, Apex, Skyview and Indigo. And I was just wondering if those are at capacity? So you're thinking that this one will be easy to fill?
Correct. I mean, it's a 30-month program, so yes, it'll be at or close to capacity when we're done.
Other questions? All we're doing is approving the staff to go and work on a development agreement at this point, so. Anyone from the public to speak to this item? Looks very promising. I appreciate you coming out this morning. Look forward to the negotiation. Have a motion?
I move approval of agenda item 4.5.
I don't second just yet. I have one more comment about the development concept. I mean, if we're, if we're just, if what we're doing is okaying to staff to go out and negotiate some details and things like that, I would say on the development concept page, there are, you know, some specifics about, you know, sustainability and if, if we can give direction to staff to make sure that those types of features are articulated, you know, that it's not just glossed over with general terms. So things that I would ask would be, would you be building to a minimum LEED level certification? Are you going to incorporate solar? Are you going to incorporate EV charging stations? What sustainable features would you have in those apartments? So those are the questions that I would be coming back with after you negotiate something. I mean, I'm pretty transparent that those are things that are important to me.
Right.
So, so as you've, you know, mentioned here that we've got, you know, you've mentioned sustainable things, just make sure we've got them bulleted out with.
Note to self.
Yeah, thanks.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. 4.6.
Authorize the community redevelopment agency director to prepare a loan-to-grant agreement with 527-531 Cleveland Street LLC in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for building improvements to implement the CRA vacancy reduction grant program, Part A, and authorize appropriate officials to execute same. The applicant has requested a $1 million grant from the CRA to combine two buildings, 527-531 Cleveland Street, to renovate approximately 11,000 square feet of vacant and underutilized space to support a full-service restaurant and six microbreweries. One of the breweries will be part of an incubator program. The estimated total project cost is $2,41,775. The project will be a complete renovation of two buildings, including new facades, new roof, windows, doors, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, HVAC, floor system and fire sprinkler systems. The current request does not include any kitchen or brewery incubator equipment. The staff, after having reviewed the proposed request, recommends that Part A of the application is substantially complete. The proposed use of a full-service restaurant and microbreweries, the building improvements and the project location are consistent with the goals and objectives of the 2018 downtown redevelopment and the 2021 to 2023 CRA strategy. The 500 block of Cleveland Street is a highly visible location in downtown. Current properties need significant improvement. The quality of the proposed improvements and the tenant mix justify Part A grant award. The applicant proposes a financial match from private equity sources and can meet the required 18-month construction timeline. Staff recommends establishing a grant approval of up to the maximum of $500,000 for the proposed project and moving forward with developing a grant agreement that would return to the CRA trustees for consideration at a future meeting. At this time, it is staff's opinion that the application for Part B is incomplete and staff recommends that the applicant consider bringing forward a complete request once subtenants have been identified and any of the information required on the application form Part B can be provided. If the CRA trustees wish to move forward with drafting a five-year loan-to-grant agreement for Part A, the following conditions are recommended to apply. Number one, accurate project budget, including cost estimates and matching funds for eligible interior and exterior improvements that will establish the final CRA grant amount. A building permit obtained, Clearwater business tax receipt, a tenant lease, a payment schedule, commitment to a five-year loan-to-grant agreement secured through one or more of the following methods, mortgage, personal guarantee, promissory note. With that, your approval is recommended and I know the applicant is here who may want to make some statements to you as well.
Any questions for Mr. Delk? Does the applicant wish to speak?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, board members. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate the nice presentation. As Michael mentioned, the application was for a total of $1 million and that's for the full facade renovation and purchasing equipment. So we do, we are purchasing equipments for the breweries and the kitchen. So if, I know he's recommending the grant for Part A, but without Part B, it doesn't work. So we need to have both at the same time. We can't have one before the other because if we accept the Part A application and Part B is not granted, the project doesn't go forward. So we do need the full $1 million to be able to be approved.
Questions? We may call you back. Counsel member Buckman?
Do we have the two quotes? Did I miss something or do we just have one quote? Are there two quotes there that are required?
I submitted two quotes.
Is it attached here on this agenda? The two different, I mean, I...
Yeah, it's on page, page three or page four of the...
One out of 18? Or no, never mind. I trust you.
Page four of their...
One was for $2,000, $2,41,000, one was for $2,164.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Other questions or comments?
Well, can I say, I was just, I was struck by, I wa, you know, I took a tour of the two buildings early last week and was just really struck by the amount of disrepair. It's really, really bad. And, you know, it's my understanding that the owner has had those buildings for seven years?
About that.
Yeah? And nothing's been done. It's continued to deteriorate for seven years, which is like, why? You know, why, why, why does somebody purchase a building, two buildings? And let it rot for seven years and then come and ask for a million dollars to fix it up?
Well, the building was, when the building was purchased, it was at that condition. And we, I know, I know the owner has tried and we have tried to attract different tenants to take over the building, but as you've seen, it's when they walk in, I mean, the amount of work that needs to be done and the amount of return they're going to get based on the rental rates in downtown Clearwater, it's almost impossible.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what happened. We do have some office tenants in there that helps to cover at least the taxes and some maintenance on the building, but as, as you said, you told it, inviting a restaurant owner or F and B owner to come over there and decide to spend X amount of money just to renovate the building, it's not easy. And that's why we're here asking the city to help out.
I know. But I go buy a house for a fixer-upper.
Yeah.
You know, I put money in it and, and make it, you know, attractive for somebody to come in and rent it or buy it. And I don't sit on it for seven years and accrue all those costs of, you know, utilities and insurance and all that stuff. And, and so then I have to recoup those costs of sitting on it for seven years with nothing. So I, it's going to take a whole lot of money to fix that. And, you know, part of the tour was, you don't know how extensive that damage is still right now, just, just what we see visually. Once you start pulling off things and taking down things, it can be way more expensive than $2 million plus.
Okay.
Which means they are at risk for that additional money.
Yes.
Counsel member Buckman?
I dare say there are probably buildings that have been sitting empty far longer than seven years, but you're right, we, we do need our property owners to be doing something with the properties that are under their control. It seems to me that with the $1 million that you're asking for, it's primarily going to be used to fix up the place, isn't it? Like, Part B is supposed to be more toward buying the equipment for the breweries, for example, but you, you need it primarily just to, to get the place in shape, right?
Well, the way the, the grant program is set up, the first part is for fixing up the space and then the other part is a grant B, that's for buying equipment and things that make the building more unique. So I, I'll say, we have to, at some point, include equipment costs in there because we have to purchase equipment, but that not necessarily has to be from the grant program, but we do have to, we do have to attack the equipment costs with it, yes.
Will you be, if we were to break the rules and give you a million for upfront, would you be coming back for more money to...
No, we've never, never done that before.
Is there any reason to prevent you from moving forward with just the $500,000?
The problem with that is that, yes, we could try that, but if we come back for the B and we don't get that, then it just doesn't work. I mean, we've, we've crunched in numbers and getting just 500, and I know that's a lot of, that's a lot of money, but that just won't work. It just won't work.
So your, your primary concern is you're not sure you're going to qualify for Part B or we're not going to approve Part B if we see the success you've had so far with Part A?
But we, we can't start. We, I mean, are we going to take 500 and renovate the building without considering what's going to go into the interior? It just, it just doesn't work. And I know what you're trying to say, but that just doesn't work. It doesn't work.
Well, with the $500,000 worth of improvements you can make, even if this incubator that you're not clearly sure that, that you're going to be able to get financed through us, would you still be able to, to make enough improvements that those two buildings will be appealing for some other business to move into?
I mean, I, I do get your point, Ms. Councilman, but we, we have a vision and a plan, which we worked on for about two years, you know, and we've engaged with different breweries and talked to different larger brewery facilities and we, we have this plan we want to work out. And I know you're trying, you're trying to anticipate that we just renovate the building and just make it prime for, prime for possible tenants, but we still have to work on the interior part of the building, you know, we still have to do that. So the, and the first grant we have, the $500,000, only for the facade, it's not to do with really for the interior, if I understand it right.
Facade grant.
Exactly. Have you seen, the interior needs to be done also? So the, I don't get the, I don't understand how that's going to work for us. Because the $500,000 is only for facade.
No, $500,000?
For Part A.
That you're going to use to renovate and make the building occupiable?
Right.
Is our understanding. Yeah, $500,000, that would be, you wouldn't need that much for a facade.
Well, speaking with our architects, some of the walls might not be solvable, solvable, so we might have to take those down also. As you, as you've seen, there's a substantial amount of modern work that has to be done, so.
Mr. Fauno?
We would like to clarify the Part A. It is not just for facade, Mr. Fauno, if you can...
The extra half a million dollars for the agency.
Start with the Part A, please.
I'm sorry, Part A will be for building improvements for any sort of ADA requirements, bathrooms and things of that nature. So you would fix up the building, for lack of a better term, for facade, whatever it may be, it would be up to half a million dollars. The other half a million dollars is that catalytic element that I believe Mr. Doc was speaking about. And if you go back and you look at the adopted program, which has been attached to the agenda item, it's on page four, there's certain evidence that an applicant has to present in order to reach that extra half a million dollars. Things like awards or newspaper clippings and really importantly would be the previous success of a tent or a development team. And as I look at this application, I don't see any tents. I see a proposal for six brew pubs or breweries or whatever they may be called, whoever they are. And that's why the staff said that this is an incomplete application in terms of Part B, because we don't know who those tenants are. It could be anybody. And we don't know if we give a million dollars, who those tenants will still be. So if we give, but the applicant has reached that Part A, part that I talked about, building improvements, ADA requirements, whatever it may be, so they can fix the building up. But do they have that catalytic element? And we don't see that, I don't see that, and I believe that's the state's representation. The fact that the applicant cannot get the project off the ground without the million dollars is frankly irrelevant in my mind. The law is, we've established it according to that program, is you have to have evidence that you meet Part B under the catalytic element and frankly, they don't. That does not prohibit them from coming back. It just means that right now, they don't meet the requirements of the program.
Thank you, Mr. Fauno. Well, I'd like to see this project go forward. I would like them to get the additional tenants that we need. The 400 block on Cleveland Street is working. The 500 block sadly is lagging behind and we need a catalyst in the 500 block. It would be very helpful to have this project. I'm fully in support of the 500. The big question, I think, for the applicant is, you know, how far along are they in getting the partners that they need to qualify for the second half? And should we go forward with the first half if in fact they need the full million to move forward? So you all would like to address that?
Sorry, I have to apologize. Just repeat what you said, sorry. I didn't, I didn't clear what you said, sorry.
I'm in full support of getting you to the million, but at the same time, you do have to meet the criteria.
I understand that you can't move forward with only the 500.
The question is, where are you in the process of fulfilling the needs that the city has as far as partners, credible partners to be managing and be a part of the project so that you can meet both Part A and Part B?
Yeah, I, I know he mentioned he needs awards for the, for the tenants. That's interesting, but what I'd like to say is that we're bringing in, what makes this special is we're bringing in seven different entities and that one restaurant, six breweries, and one's an incubator. And to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, it's, we have spoken to different breweries and it's hard to get a concrete agreement down if we don't have any, any proof that we're going to get, get an approval. It's a chicken or the egg, as they call it. We have spoken to a bunch of different breweries. I've spoken to Clever Brew Company, the ones on Fort Harrison, they think it's a great valuable project. I've spoken to different, I've spoken to the brew hub in Lakeland, they also interested. It's just hard to get any agreement down without having a condition, at least, at least some kind of condition of proof for the next part. If we can get that, that might help us a little bit, you know?
Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Aubrey?
No, I think, I think the mayor and I are on the same page. I have no problem, I see this project receiving the full million dollars. It's just, I don't know that I'm in a position to say, I can give you the full million today. I like the process of, you know, $500,000 upfront to now get the building done, and when you come back, as that's being put together, you come back to us, when you come back to us and say, I have this person for tenant A, this person, I've got this group for tenant B, that type of thing, I will not hesitate to give the other $500,000, because I think this is the bright project for the 500 block. It's just, we do have our process, and I think, you know, following the process is the right thing to do. I think you guys can also follow the process. I don't think there's anybody up here saying, if you, I'm not going to give you $500,000 and then turn around and say, that's all you get, and, you know, if, you know, if you meet the requirements of Part A with the $500,000, Part B, I think, falls in line very easily and we can address that at the time. Plus, it's the fact that we don't have to come out of pocket with a million dollars upfront. And we have certain restrictions with our money as well and limitations, so.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Yeah, this is, process is big with the CRA, and with anything we do up here, because it's public money. We aren't private. I mean, this, we have to show the public that we're being fiscally responsible. And, you know, I walked that building with you, I've known, I've seen that building before, you even, you know, bought it, needed a lot of work. But what I'd like to see you do, I want to see you be successful on this, because I love the idea, I think it'd be great. So if we vote today to give you the 500 to get started, you have that commitment now from the city, and I'd like to see you work that and try to get your tenants and get the other Part B. You could do that, come back to us in a month and say, hey, we've got this, and then we can go ahead and give you the other part. We don't have to wait till, you know, it's completely done, but you have to go by the process. And I think, I speak for everybody up here. I mean, I think, we've seen what you can do, we've seen what Daniels can do with really making something different in our community, in our downtown. We're all, I think, for this, but, you know, it's back in your court now, you have to work and get that Part B going.
I just wanted to invite quickly Daniels to make a quick statement, please.
Mayor, Councilmembers, staff. First of all, thanks for the opportunity. So obviously, you guys had the opportunity to see the building. As Festus has mentioned, you know, it would take all one million dollars to build this project. Can we get a commitment from you guys right now for Part B to at least have a confidence that there is actually money going to be if we land the tenants? And what would be that requirement? Is it all seven tenants have to be lined up? Is it half of them? Is there a timeframe that we have to land these tenants? That's the question, or maybe, or guidance from your side so that we know what we're working with. It is chicken or egg, basically. I would not solicit or put my name out there unless I have a commitment from the council. Because if I go out there and say, hey, we're going to build this project, but then we end up not building it, I put my reputation on the line. I would never do that.
Well, I think you're hearing the intent to do it, but we cannot make a commitment until you've actually got the tenants. Mr. Delk had a comment, I can just see Miss Aiken out of the corner of my eye wanting to dive in.
Well, I just, I wanted to kind of reiterate some of the points that, you know, we too support ultimately, a million dollar ask, but I'll be honest with you, that's 50% of the project cost, so we're a little, we're a little inclined to scrutinize that pretty heavily. One of the reasons why the building sits there for so many years without occupants is that it's not occupiable. So it needs a certain level of investment from the ownership of the property in order to make it an occupiable structure. We're willing to invest in that, but the second half of that, the outcome in terms of the economic development that we are willing to take risk on, which is the next $500,000, we would like to see the property owner make that commitment and have a stronger commitment for the tenants and the ultimate objective of the economic development portion of this project in order to qualify for the next $500,000. So I think from our perspective, being basically 50% in on this project with the building owner is a big ask, and so we are, we're taking a deliberate, we think of a very substantial stake, if you will, in the success of the property, but we want to see the backside commitment to qualify for that remaining $500,000. And if that can happen, we're entirely ready to support the project as well.
So I think the question is, what does that look like?
Exactly.
Well, can you answer that?
Well, I think we want to have some commitments, and we want to see what the tenancies are. And I think, as Mr. Fueno outlined, some of the issues that we're not, at least in our satisfaction, we're not successfully negotiated yet. So we'll negotiate the second half, and we can continue to do that if you are uncomfortable with approving the initial phase right now. But frankly, I would think a $500,000 award from the CRA is a pretty substantial incentive to work with us to complete the second half, but that's, that's up to the applicant.
Miss Aiken?
No, I think Mr. Delk put that very well. The Part A is to get the structure in condition, the Part B is to really prepare it for the catalytic occupancy and to have the catalytic occupants. So that's the piece that is not ready yet. You could approve the Part A, and then they come back when they're ready with Part B. I heard Mr. Daniels be concerned that maybe the funds would not still be available later? Was that a concern that you were expressing?
Or commitment changes. So it's really hard to, you know, say what's appetite will be in six months or three months or one year from now. So, I mean, it's, it's a...
Are you talking about the CRA program?
CRA, or, I mean, things do change, obviously, right? So we come back in six months, say, or a year from now, and the commitment is completely different from the board or from CRA. I mean, and the funds could be committed to completely something else, right? So they're another reserve for Part B for us at this point as well, right? So again, we are having something open-ended at this very moment. And just to clarify, why nothing was done to the building, when you have a tenant, just like in Backwater America Building, you don't build spaces out unless you have a tenant, because you don't know what they will require to have, so it's a waste of money, unless you have specifics. They might want to have a facade outside specifically for them, they might want to have two doors versus one-door entrance, they might have completely different requirements for restrooms, you can't build something unless you have specifics from them.
Councilmember Beckman.
Okay, all right. You can't build specifics, I get that, but you could put, you know, fix holes in roofs and holes in floors and, you know, rotting drywall and cardboard on the ceiling. So I get building out, but I also get making it so you can walk in and breathe the air and it's not, you know, full of mold spores and whatever. One of the things, I'm fully supportive of this, Daniels, I think it's, you know, it goes to fulfillment, it's going to be phenomenal, and I hope it does, I would fully support it, I think it would be great. But to, to give you a million dollars right up front, first of all, you've got to fulfill the requirements of Part B, because that's what, you know, that's part of filling the boxes. But I, my concern is, it's going to cost way more than, you know, $500,000 plus to get those buildings, so you can walk in the door and feel good about them, let alone start to put up walls and brew material for each tenant who is going to sign on the line. So to give you a million dollars, and I anticipate it's going to be way over 2. whatever million you've got on the estimate, you know, you don't, as I took the tour, you don't know what's behind those walls and what you're going to come up with, and so let's just imagine you have an extra million dollars worth of getting it up to code and requirements. I'm not giving you a million now, and you can't even get it cleaned up so we can walk in the door. So I give you $500,000, work your magic to get it cleaned up, get some tenants checked off the box, and here's another $500,000. Absolutely.
Let me answer this. So we had a similar experience with the ring. We requested 50% of the project cost, it was budgeted initially at 1.2 million dollars. We ended up spending 2.4 million dollars. I covered the rest.
Fantastic.
So there's really absolutely no risk for the CRA at this point. If we go above the budget, that's on us, it's not on the CRA.
Then why do you need a million today? Why can't you take the $500,000 and cover whatever, you know, happens?
I think we're losing the focus on incubator space inside the brewery hall there. That incubator space, first of all, comes as a free space, free equipment for the incubators, right? So there's initial investment basically in that incubator space. Second of all, that space will not make any money going forward for me as well, right? So if you combine those two values alone there, that's in a lifespan of 10 years, would cost me personally about $427,000, right? So we can talk about, obviously, getting the tenants, I'm in agreement, we could align a few things, a few up, but I think there was also in the CRA document that gave us a rights for one year to line up these tenants. So, and it will take a year to build that project. So really, again, there's no risk for the CRA or board of states to make that commitment, in my opinion.
Councilmember Bunker.
This afternoon, we're going to hear pitches from two developers for the Bluff Properties, and they're also including incubators and breweries. They already have, at least one of them has partners who have signed on to be part of it, and I think that's, that's really what we're looking for. We want to make sure that you can come through and find people who actually want to come to your incubator and be a partner. As everyone has said, we want this to work. We want you to succeed. I think there's got to be a way for us to convey that that extra half a million is going to be available for you, you just have to go out and find those people. And when you see you've got work started on this, it should be a lot easier to get folks to buy in. We're not going to leave you out to dry, we just need you to fill in those blanks for Part B.
So you're hearing five voices that are saying that they're committed to this and that we won't take the money and put it elsewhere, and even with the elections in 2022, you know, you've got three voices who are giving you the support that you know will be here. So I think what we need to do is approve the 500 today, and then as soon as we have the data that we need, we can approve the second 500.
Okay. So just to clarify, do we have to line up all seven tenants, or is it percentage of the, what's basically the requirement, exactly?
I would, my approach on that one, Daniels, would be quality, not quantity. I would think if you could land that one or two known, like a restaurant tenant, someone for the restaurant space that is very well-known, that will attract, someone says, I want to be right there with them. So I would think it's more of a quantity, quality rather than quantity. I don't, I would be comfortable, I would be comfortable with, you know, a couple good quality tenants saying, I'm coming in, because I know they will attract people, because people are going to want to be part of that when they realize what's going on. I would not require you to have all tenants under contract, myself.
Councilmember Beckman.
Well, why, I, with all due respect, why are you asking that? Because I would say, here's Part B, here are the requirements, go do them. I mean, I'm not looking at Part B right now, so that's what you have to do. I don't think we should be negotiating what we should be doing with them, he's got it in front of him, just like every other person who wants to do something in the CRA has in front of him, right? Yeah? Yes? So why, why are we discussing Part B?
It doesn't specify, basically, that part.
Pardon?
It does not specify that part.
It does not specify how many?
No, not clearly, not for me.
It doesn't?
And I think that you do have discretion in that, but letters of intent, and I know, I think Councilman Hamilton is correct, you don't have to have all seven, we just have to know that it's going to move forward and that you have a base for that.
Clear enough? Thanks so much.
Anyone from the public to speak to this item? Do I have a motion for the $500,000 in Part A?
I'll shoot to approve item 4.6, $500,000 in Part A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Anything else, Mr. Doc?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're going to adjourn, we're going to take a 10-minute break before we start the work session.
Good morning. We will call the work session for May 17, 2021 to order. We're going to start out with a presentation, and the council member, Albritton, would like to make the introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. As everybody knows, I'm on the PSTA board, and I was impressed with, I'm going to introduce Cassandra Vortures. She's the PSTA's Chief Development Officer. And she does, she's going to give us a presentation on the PSTA Water Ferry. And I could have talked about this, but she does such a better job that here she is, and she's going to give us some visuals here.
Thank you very much. This is my little echoing.
Yes, it is.
I'm just getting used to getting out of my house. So it's a pleasure to be here at City of Clearwater, of course, seeing a lot of familiar faces. Happy to have you back, Mr. Mayor, and some new faces. So I hope we'll continue our great partnership between PSTA and the City of Clearwater on so many projects. First and foremost, I would like to thank you and your staff. Your staff has been incredible on all of the projects that we've been working on. They've just been so attentive to the things that we need, and so I just want to make sure that you know how good they've been. So today, I'm going to talk a little bit about our efforts with waterborne transportation. And we've been working with Forward Pinellas, the regional MPO, on this project because this is something we've been talking about as a community for quite some time. And the vision of waterborne transportation is just as important as making sure those proof of concepts that we have going right now are maintained in a way that integrates them with our own public transportation system. And so that is why PSTA was asked to step in and take a look at the ferry systems across Pinellas County, but also look at how we go from where we are today to a vision of the future. So we're starting with the Clearwater Service. And I know that's exactly what you wanted to hear, Mayor, wasn't it? We're starting, let me say it again. We're starting with the Clearwater Service. And everything after that, we'll look at systematically as we build the system out. And so while we're looking at where new docks would be for the existing Clearwater Ferry service, potentially some new vehicle, vessel acquisition, I'm changing from buses to boats, as well as looking at the operations and making sure that that fits in with all of what PSTA is doing. Next, we'll take a look at the Cross Bay Ferry and some of the services in John's Pass, but without forgetting that we need to look at the overall system. So you are all very familiar with the existing services, and this has been a great proof of concept. But I know that you are also very aware that public transportation doesn't necessarily come without looking at public investment. So this has been very difficult for the current operator to continue in a way that maximizes how that service can fit into a public-funded service. And next, we've been working with Forward Pinellas on looking at that broader picture of continuing from Clearwater to the South Beaches, connecting into John's Pass, and potentially someday looking at service from Gulfport around the point to downtown. This is something that the City of St. Petersburg has been looking at, as something that they'd like to make sure that they're connecting to the west side of Pinellas County. Some of the key activities that we have been asked to look at are making sure that we are transforming what we have today into a singular, integrated system. That means looking at service hours that meet both the needs of our entertainment travelers as well as commuters, looking differently at fair pricing. And equity has been a huge issue in the public transportation and across the nation. And we are looking at how do we make the fair pricing equitable and integrated into what PSTA is doing. And when people start to plan their trips, can they use a singular app in order to make sure how they're connecting into the Jolly Trolley or the PSTA Suncoast Beach Trolley as well as the ferry, and make sure that they are, we are planning for them a complete trip. And of course, this will not move forward without public sector involvement. And so the City of Clearwater, the City of Dunedin, Pinellas County are going to be very important partners in making this bigger and better come to fruition. We have been looking at what are other agencies doing around the country, and how do they look at their waterborne transportation? Some are privately operated, some are operated within the public sector. They are funded in all different ways, and they have fair pricing that is different. A lot of this has to do with who are they serving? And if they are serving an entertainment market, generally the fare is higher. If they're serving a commuter market, generally the fare is lower. There are three areas that we are working on right now in very great detail. And this, the first one and two are directly related to an FTA, Federal Transit Administration Passenger Ferry Grant Program Pursuit. And so PSTA will be working with Forward Pinellas and you all to put together a proposal to the federal government in order to help fund capital investments in the ferry. This is something that PSTA has never been able to pursue before because we weren't in the water transportation market. And so this is a great complement to both grants that we already receive and something that we as a community can access at the federal level. We are working with your Clearwater Marina Director, Ed Chesney, he's been amazing, on your Clearwater Marina redesign and making sure that any docks that we would put in for the ferry are matching up with what your vision is for that project. In addition to that, we've been working with Clearwater Ferry and some very interesting manufacturers across the country to look at potential new vessel acquisition. When we're purchasing vessels, it is a very long-term commitment, and we want to make sure that the propulsion types that we're selecting are not only environmentally friendly for today, but they have the capacity to change as our environmental needs change and as the technology is available. Lastly, we're looking at service development options. And what that means is how the service performs, what time does it start, what time does it end, how frequent is it, and giving, looking at some different options so that we can not only continue what we're doing today, but also seek some additional state funding support for those operations. In a little bit more detail, we've hired AECOM through our PSTA contract. It's working with Mr. Chesney and his team on a dock that would accommodate at least two vessels and, again, fit into the vision of the Clearwater Marina. What we're looking at right now is a general high-level engineer's cost estimate of somewhere in the neighborhood of 3/4 of a million to a million dollars each. Again, these have a very long life expectancy, so you're looking at about a 50-year investment in this. And then we're also looking at this vessel acquisition concept, working with the existing service and the operator, as well as your team, and thinking about what does the future vessel look like. You'll see, these are some great renderings that a consultant has done for us, and we're moving forward with them to take a deeper dive on what those vessels might look like. But we want to make sure that they fit the operation that we planned, meaning they would have a speed requirement of 17 to 20 knots, which is just under 20 miles an hour, fully loaded, that they have the capacity that we're looking for, but that they're interoperable with the routes that we have today as well as the routes that we have in the future. Again, this is a very long-term commitment. A commitment to a vessel is about 25 years, but at the same time, those can last a lot longer if they're well-maintained. One of the most exciting things is the look at the propulsion systems. So we've been working with a team that has experience in hybrid electric services. And so we would potentially build these vessels to accommodate a hybrid electric propulsion system today, but if the body continues to be well-maintained, we could move that to an all-electric as the technology increases and we're able, and we're able to make sure that we have a reliable system with an all-electric system. So as I mentioned, these are long-term investments, and so they do come at quite a high cost. And so right now, we're looking at a high-level engineering estimate of four to five million dollars per vessel. I know that sounds like a lot, and it sounds like a big range. And so we're going to engage a naval architect to take a deeper dive on these vessels and take a look at how we can bring those costs down without sacrificing some of the characteristics that we're looking for. You may ask the question of why these vessels instead of the vessels that they're running today. And one of the major reasons that we're looking at a commercial-grade vessel is because the vessels that you have today are not meant to do the work that they're doing today. And so the maintenance has been a little behind in what needs to happen, but also these vessels will need to be replaced much sooner because of the heavy-duty work that they've been asked to do. So our next steps are for PSTA to fund and conduct a concept design phase for the vessels. We'll continue to look at the docks and make adjustments as the vessel concept starts to materialize, and solidify those cost estimates so that they can walk into and ask the federal government. We are also looking at what might need to happen on the operating side and those potential commitments that we may ask for from you all and from others to look at how we would support funding that operations, as well as a local capital grant match. We have been exploring with Forward Pinellas an opportunity to look at TDC funding, and we think there may be some opportunities there, but it will not be the only partnership that we will need in order to move this forward. So unless you'd like me to go back to the renderings, which are just, I think, fabulous, just gorgeous, I'll take your questions.
Questions. Vortures, Councilmember Backman.
That sounds, it all sounds fantastic. I was going to ask, does it look promising to gain funding, infrastructure funding from the federal government? Are you guys real hopeful?
We are very hopeful. However, frequently, federal applications take a couple of years to mature. So we would like to put in an application this year and just see how it goes. We are looking at this funding opportunity, which is highly competitive, but we also believe that we are also leaving some money on the table in other areas, and so we're going to explore those as well.
And then where does this fall in a list of priorities? Because I know you guys are doing like electric buses and different things like that. So how do you see a water ferry falling in?
So we do have priorities at PSTA. I would say our top priority right now is also a Clearwater project. So our top priority at this moment is the Clearwater Multimodal Transportation Center, and so this falls behind that.
Thank you.
The questions? What are we looking at as far as matches now? Is it a 50-50 or...?
So the capital matches are 80-20. So we're looking at maybe collecting maybe a $6 million capital match. And then we have to take a look at operating funds, the existing service. We would probably have to do on our own. Any future service expansions, we could apply to the Florida Department of Transportation for a 50-50 grant.
We have another item later in the agenda, the local option gas tax. You are a transportation expert. Probably won't be popular. Can you just speak to the fact that the federal government is kind of like God? God helps those who help themselves. Can you just talk... Can you just talk about grants and how the local option gas tax matters?
Yes. So let's, let's set the gas tax aside for just a moment and I certainly can answer questions about how those pay for roadways and other transportation, both in the state of Florida and nationally. But to your point, Mayor, we can have the best project on paper that anyone has ever seen, but if we do not have a local match, we will not get the federal dollars. So there are really two pieces to every project that you apply for at the federal government. One is your project justification and the quality of your project and how it serves your, your community and how it solves your transportation problem. And then do you have the cash? Because even at an 80-20, that's, that's a great investment if you're asking the federal government to pay 80 cents on the dollar, but you have to come up with that 20 cents.
Thank you. Councilmember Olbruck?
Yeah, I got to say a few things about this. It's, what I've noticed through Ford Pinellas as well as PSTA in talking to our representatives in Washington and in Tallahassee, this is a big buzzword, waterborne transportation. It's, it's really come to fruition now. There's going to be money for it because they see the advantages of waterborne transportation. And one of the things, I mean, we have a transfer, a ferry system in Clearwater that's very good, but it's mostly a tourism kind of thing. This is, this is going to bring waterborne transportation into, under the wing of PSTA into public transportation. And because of where we live, where we have an island, out-island system all the way down to Tampa Bay, it really makes more sense to have waterborne transportation where you can go from A to B directly instead of going down to find a bridge to go to A and then, I mean, much more mileage involved. And so I see this as something that is really going to be, take off, I think, and really be very valuable for our, our area. You know, other cities, it's not like we're reinventing the wheel. I mean, you can go anywhere that has cities that are on the water and, you know, that have had waterborne transportation is very successful. So I'm hoping that that will come into fruition here.
Any other questions? I want to thank you for coming out this morning. Did you have one, Councilmember Buck?
I, I was just wondering if we allow water taxis here? If that would be something that's handled by PSTA?
I would consider them one and the same. It's just under a different moniker. So it's more about what is the service and what is the frequency and what is the size of the vessel? So these would be just larger water taxis.
I want to thank you for coming out this morning. We would forward to continuing to work in conjunction to make these projects come through in our best, Mr. Miller. Item 3.1.
Approve an inter-local agreement with Pinellas County to increase the local option fuel tax by 5 cents. Mr. Lavery.
Good morning, Michael Lavery, City Manager's Office. Pinellas County is seeking your approval for an inter-local agreement regarding an increase to the local option fuel tax. This details how the tax, additional tax that the county is considering would be distributed. The tax funds, the existing tax and the proposed increase in tax funds the county's transportation trust fund. And the trust fund is projected to be exhausted in fiscal year 2022. An additional 5 cents, which the county is, will be considering, would bring Pinellas County to the current state cap for local option fuel taxes. This agreement, approval of this agreement by, by you does not implement the tax and does not support the tax increase. It simply details how the revenue will be distributed if the Board of County Commissioners implements the tax increase. Should the inter-local agreement be approved, the Board of County Commissioners will then discuss whether they will implement the tax and to what level, between 1 and 5 additional cents. The proposed distribution is the same formula as the existing 7 cent, 7 cents in fuel tax, which was renewed in 2015. Pinellas County will receive 60% of the tax and the incorporated municipalities will split the remaining 40% based on population. I don't take any questions.
Any questions? I'll tell you this, you know, we're only approving the local agreement, but this has been talked about for decades. And I ask that question of Miss Porters because I know there's been times in the past where we have not done as well in the grant process because we had not maximized our local option gas tax. And nobody likes to put in new taxes. And that's not what we're doing today, but I do think that we need to give some support of not just approving this, but also of the county commissioners. I mean, you saw what happened with the pipeline just last week and how it impacted gas prices and supplies. We've seen all sorts of shocks to the system within the energy sector and what it does. People don't realize how much money they expend because maybe our roads aren't up to snuff or we can improve traffic flow so that not only you're not spending as much time going from point A to point B and get to spend more time with your family, but you're also expending less fuel, wear and tear on your vehicle and everything else. So I have always been a proponent that we ought to increase the local option gas tax. And again, I don't think that's a very popular thing to say as an elected official, but I think we ought to help our county commissioners with some cover on that and at least, you know, own a little bit of it. And so I support this. Vice Mayor?
Well, I, I agree and I think, you know, when you, when you get into payment of taxes, this is about as fair a application as you can have because the people who use the most pay the most. I, I think there's a, but I know as Senator Brandis said at the legislative breakfast last week, you know, in this decade, they expect by the end of this decade, electric vehicles to be 15 to 20% of the vehicles on the road. Electric vehicles do not pay the gas tax. So we're losing revenue there. And he made reference to a, you know, and I think it's, I think it's logical to have, you know, an electric vehicle when you read, when you register your license tag every year, there's an additional charge for the electric to, to compensate for the wear and tear that the electric vehicle is doing on the roadway as well. And I think that's, and my question was, if you've got this plan, why haven't you put it into, into, into force? And I don't know, I don't, they didn't really, the one legislator I talked to about it didn't want to, didn't, didn't really have an answer for him. But the other part of this is, and I know there's people out there, oh, don't put any more taxes on me, this, that and the other, but I always have to laugh using one particular area as an example, the intersection of Drew Street and Belcher Road. There's a Hess station on one corner, there's a 7-Eleven on the other corner. And a lot of times, one of those stations' gas is probably 2 or 3 cents cheaper. And it's like, if, if, you know, 5 cents a gallon is that big of a deal for you, why are you buying your gas at the station that's charging you 2 or 3 cents more a gallon on, on their, you know, on their board? So this is, I, I support this. I've, I've been mentioning this for a decade probably. And, you know, there's not a more fair way to, to, to put a tax. If you use, the more gas you use, the more, the more road you use, the more roads you use, the more you pay. And there's just not a more equitable way to do it.
Questions or comments? Consent? 4.1.
Accept a gas utility easement from NRF Pinewood LLC for the construction, installation and maintenance of gas utility facilities on real property located at 3860 Tampa Road, Oldsmore, Florida, and adopt the appropriate resolution. Mr. Langill?
Good morning, Brian Langill, Assistant Director for Clearwater Gas System. This is a gas utility easement to install our lines in a shopping center plaza to serve a restaurant. It's located in Oldsmore, just off of Tampa Road. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? 4.2.
Authorize a purchase order to General Utility Pipe and Supply of Trussville, Alabama, in an annual not-to-exceed amount of $1,800,000 for the initial term of May 21, 2021 through May 20, 2022, with two one-year renewal options pursuant to invitation to bid 19-21 polyethylene pipe fittings and steel pipe fittings, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Langill again.
Yes, this is a bid that we did for the gas pipe that we install in the ground to serve our customers. So this would be the plastic and the steel gas pipeline and fittings that we need. We had three bidders on this one, consolidated, excuse me, General Utilities Pipe and Supply came in the lowest and most responsive on this bid. We did have consolidated, did come in as, as second lower bidder and we were originally going to award some line items to them, but they did withdraw their bid a couple of weeks ago. So we're only, we're requesting that you approve all of the bid items with General Utilities. And then the third vendor was Core &amp; Main. They do mostly water, storm and sewer work, and so their bid prices were considerably higher than what we saw with the other bidders. So we're requesting that you award it all to General Utilities at this time.
Any questions? Consent?
Yep.
5.1.
Authorize an increase to purchase order number 2100409 to Signal 15, Inc. of Largo, Florida, for the purchase of ballistic vests and vest carriers in an amount of $35,000, bringing the total not-to-exceed annual amount to $135,000 through September 30th, 2021, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Chief Slaughter?
Chief Slaughter at the Police Department. Good morning, Councilman Mayor. This item is to increase the purchase order to Signal 15 for a total of $135,000. The original PO was done for $50,000, but once the council directed us to implement a body worn camera program, the department had to shift some of their uniforms and start implementing outer vest carriers that would hold the camera a little more flush and secure. The, the outer cas, the outer vest carriers and the ballistic material are custom-fitted for the individual officers, so they, they do have an expense that we have to incur. The city manager was able to increase the PO by $50,000, which made the total of 100, but the department is now seeking authorization for another $35,000 for a total of $135,000 for the, the total fiscal year. Like many agencies, the department's had some, some increased levels of turnover and that also has some financial impact on our ability to get this done. This is funds that we do have available for us in our budget, just need the authorization for the purchase order. We're happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the chief? What's the lifespan of these?
Vests are five years. The outer carriers, we're kind of new to it. I'm hoping to get, I'm, I'm thinking we might have to do, you know, one every two and a half years. I'm not sure they're going to make it. They'll fray and get, you know, degrade. But the total outfit for the carrier and the cover is about $1,000.
And what if somebody's body changes over time?
We hope that that doesn't occur, but it does.
You said they were custom-made, I mean.
Yes, they are. And there are some more challenging to fit than others.
All right, consent?
Yes.
6.1.
Approve a contract for purchase of real property located at 701 Franklin Street by the city of Clearwater for property owned by the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city of Clearwater for a purchase price of $525,000 and total expenditures not to exceed $530,000, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same together with all other instruments required to effect closing. Mr. Burzak.
Robert Burzak, Real Estate Services. The purchase price has been reached through a mutual agreement of the city council and CRI Board of Trustees, is based on the $525,000 acquisition cost of the property in 2019. I understand you heard this earlier, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Consent?
Yes.
6.2.
Declare three parcels of certain real property in Section 15 Township 29 South, Range 15 East, located at 704 Court Street, 710 Court Street and 701 Franklin Street in Clearwater, Florida, as surplus for the purpose of conveying the three parcels to the Pinellas Suncoast Transit Authority in exchange for a parcel owned by the PSTA located at the northwest corner of South Garden Avenue and Pier Street, Clearwater, Florida, in order to effectuate PSTA's construction of a new multimodal transit facility. Mr. Burzak again.
The city has the current owner of two of the three parcels at 704 Street, 704 and 710 Court Street to be conveyed to the PSTA. As a prerequisite to the declaration, this surplus that per parcel requires approval at the Thursday's meeting. All three parcels are required to individually assemble for the purpose of acquiring key parcels well-suited for transit government or governmental purposes. Appraised value of three parcels was 3.6 million and 3.3 by two independent appraisers. City manager had reviewed this surplus declaration and supported. Happy to answer your questions.
Long last, when did we buy this? 2000?
2011.
2008 parcels.
I'm talking about the Times property.
It's in 2000, 2011.
Hello?
No.
It was eight.
It was earlier than that.
I don't remember.
No matter, but it's been a long time. And this will also help with our contribution, right?
Yes.
Do we have any agreement on, are we going to be responsible then for demolishing the existing PSTA and they'll have to demolish the warehouse?
There's nothing, no contract at this, at this point.
Right, that's to be negotiated.
Okay, all right. Other questions? All right, we'll talk about that on Thursday. 6.3.
Accept a utility easement from CRP WP Alta Clearwater Owner LLC for the construction, installation and maintenance of city utility facilities on a real property located at 19320 US Highway 19 North and adopt the appropriate resolution. Mr. Burzak again.
Utility easement will allow the city to maintain its utility facilities on the commercial site. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? 6.4.
Authorize a purchase order to Cardinal, Inc. of Riverview, Florida, for the maintenance of city-owned lakes, ponds, wetlands and mitigation sites in the annual not-to-exceed amount of $178,054.50 with three one-year renewal options pursuant to RFP 22-21, aquatic sites, invasive species maintenance, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Kessler?
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Sarah Kessler, Lead Environmental Specialist in the Engineering Department. Aquatic Systems outlined a comprehensive approach to addressing invasive species management in their written proposal. Removal of invasive species has a positive impact on native plant species, improves storm water flows and reduces our flood risk. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Buck?
Hi, Sarah. I thank you for including all the sites. That was really helpful. But on one of those site service map or whatever, I think it's the last one, yeah, what is gabions, gablon, gabions in maintenance area? Red things, what is that?
Gabions are, they're metal baskets that we've gone and put different-sized rocks in in order to stabilize a channel. So a lot of times, we have an easement behind homes or in narrow areas and we had an open channel there and then we have erosion and things like that. And so you put these baskets in that allow water to flow and it stops the erosion. A lot of times sediment gets in those baskets and so you have vegetation growing. Some of it's good, some of it's not good. And so those, there, those areas are put in for erosion purposes.
Okay. I bet they, they collect trash sometimes, probably?
Generally, the flows through them are pretty good and so trash is collected in different places. Generally, those areas are, are pretty clean.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, around those areas, is there any, is it a possibility or useful to have education to residents? I mean, are they doing anything that causes more vegetation or invasive species in those areas that we could reach out and let them what, know what to do or not to do?
So I would say, for the most part, residents generally don't contribute to our invasive species problem. We just have so many and the seed source that we have contributes to them. Most of the time, residents can help with the improved water quality and we do a lot of education related to that. As far as invasive species, I think the Parks Department does a great job when they do the cleanups at Moccasin Lake Park, educating on, on what it is. I don't- I don't, I don't think residents contribute that much to our invasive species population issues.
And then if, if residents who, or if anybody who lives around these ponds and water areas, if they think that there's a problem, do they use Clearwater Connect, or how would you like them to?
Yes. Clearwater Connect is a great way to let us know that there's an issue. Pinellas County also has a 24-hour line, and they send those issues directly to us. So if they, if they're not sure who to contact, Pinellas County is a great source, and it gets to us, or Clearwater Connect is a great source as well.
Thank you.
This really isn't on this issue, but driving by Gwinne Oaks Park this weekend, it's completely dry. Did we release more water?
No.
Than expected, or it's the drought conditions?
So I, we're doing some research into why this has happened, because it's happened for the past couple of years. And there used to be a well there. And so that might be a reason. Like when we built the golf court, or when we took out the golf course and built the park, it could be that that well is leaking, even though it was closed, or we're not really sure why the water is gone. But we are, we have a geotech engineer looking at what happened and where the water is and what's going on, because I, I don't, I don't know. There might be some really thirsty birds, like, I don't know. That's a, that's a lot of water that's gone really, really fast.
Shockingly fast.
Shockingly fast, yeah. So we are-
And I just wondered if we're going to lose some of vegetation because of it?
It's, hopefully, we'll get some rain at the end of this week, and that's what happens, is as soon as we get rain, that creek fills up, and it flows through, and it fills right back up. And so we have not lost any vegetation because of it. So hopefully, that won't happen this time, but we're, we're looking into finding out why this is happening.
All right, consent?
Yes.
Six point five.
Approve construction manager at risk proposal from Biltmore Construction of Bellar, Florida, for the Wayfinding Signs Program Phase One at the guaranteed maximum price of $995,826. And authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Ms. Corcoran?
Good morning, Kat Corcoran, Engineering. We've discussed this already a little bit this morning. This is Phase One of a citywide wayfinding program that was brought to light several years ago. We're ready to move forward. And I do have, do I just put something on the table and it, it'll go up?
You can put it on the Elmo.
So that's our, our location map of where the signs are going to clear up the fact that, like I said, this is Phase One of a two-phase citywide wayfinding program. The bulk of the signs in this phase are in the CRA area. As you can see, there's 96 of slightly less than 150, and the others are scattered about. Like there's some clusters in the North Greenwood area, and then as far out as Highway 19 in some of the Gateway areas. We're looking at 168 days after notice to proceed to complete the project. Happy to answer any questions you have about the program.
Councilmember Beckman?
How and when did we engage residents in any kind of feedback, or did we, about the signage?
Sure, I took over after design was completed, so I'll call on the Planning Department to answer that.
Good morning, Planning and Development, Gina Clayton. There was not a public engagement process outside of the US 19 area, because that's where the original project started. And then as we got into it, we realized that it made sense to have a citywide system. And these really are for helping people navigate throughout the city. So it was more based on, you know, professionals' opinions about how to get around. But the initial design concepts that started in the wayfinding went through a public process early on for US 19 piece.
So that was how many years ago?
A long time ago. I don't know, maybe five, five years ago, maybe, when we started.
You know, one of my notes here is just, and I know it's just a personal opinion, but as we mentioned earlier, I think signage can be charming and community building. And I'm of the feeling that when you direct your neighborhood to the park over here, or, you know, the nature preserve here, walking trail, or this is where the Pinellas Trail is, it's a sense of community, and it encourages people to be out moving on their legs, or multimodal moving, bikes, wagons, tricycles, whatever. And that maybe people don't want their hidden treasure parks advertised, but when they're in on a neighborhood street, it's not like, you know, they're off Drew Street necessarily, but...
I think most of the wayfinding was limited to major arterials and collectors, and they direct people to major city assets. They don't direct people necessarily to neighborhood parks.
Okay.
And that sort of thing. It provides wayfinding in the downtown, which is something that the Downtown Development Board and Clearwater Downtown Partnership have been advocating for a refresh, and in particular, to provide better signage to parking garages. The, the whole wayfinding plan, as I said, started on US 19, but we ran into some issues with FDOT and getting that part permitted. But we realized because it would provide more effective directions if we had a coordinated citywide system, it then, you know, expanded out to major park facilities, major cultural facilities, and to downtown and to the beach.
And the uniformity and stuff, yeah, I think that's all.
With some branding, even though the sign plan is cohesive, each special district, like downtown and the beach and US 19, would have had their own kind of like unique character.
I saw that, that downtown on the top.
Added with like different color and a little different logo, but it all fits with the city brand.
Okay. And so it's really for signage for people and vehicles, pretty much?
No, it's for, it's for everyone. It's supposed to try to help people navigate through the community to major destinations. We did an original plan that would identify the types of facilities that would be included in the plan, so that that would set the stage. Council approved that, and then we went forward with the detailed design work.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Consent?
Yes.
Six point six.
Approve the First Amendment to the ground lease agreement with renewal options. First Amendment between the City of Clearwater and Jolly Trolley Transportation of Clearwater, Inc. for the ground lease of city-owned property located at 1720 Overbrook Avenue, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Burzak?
Robert Burzak, Real Estate Services. The city and Jolly Trolley entered a ground lease agreement with renewal options on January 23rd, 2020. The lease agreement requires Jolly Trolley to commence vertical construction within 18 months, but they experienced delays due to the pandemic. This First Amendment extends the period for vertical destruction from 18 to 30 months. All their terms and conditions of lease agreement may fall for full force and effect. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Consent? Six point seven.
Award a construction contract to Gibbs &amp; Register, Inc. of Winter Garden, Florida, for invitation to bid 16-0003 EN and 19-0026 EN for Cleveland Street, Streetscaping Phase Three and Gateway Festival Core in the amount of $15,215,742.30. Approve a professional services agreement and work order to GAI Consultants, Inc. of Tampa, Florida, per RFQ 13-21 in the amount of $481,030. Approve a Duke Energy proposal pursuant to Clearwater Code of Ordnances, Section 2.5641B, sole source, in the amount of $258,299.36. And authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Ms. Corcoran again.
Good morning. I think we've got four and one, being real efficient about it this morning.
Speak into the mic.
Four, four items.
Just speak into the mic.
Four items for you today to make this more efficient. So this is the Cleveland Street Phase Three and the Mercado projects combined, and all of the construction administration requirements to support it. So this has been in the works for several years as well. This started as, what was this going to be, surface beautification work, and quickly evolved into replacing all of the underground utilities. So we're, you know, cutting, or we're, we're heading off any major repairs that we would need. We're expecting 30 to 50-year lifespan out of the new system, which is reaching the end of its natural life as it is, and certainly adding extensive pedestrian amenities, including a designated bike lane, safer sidewalks to use, and safer median arrangements for left turns. Significant amount of planting going in, including some storm water treatment, landscape beds that will help us with our water quality. And so with any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Vice Mayor?
Not necessarily a question, but it's a lot of, it's a lot of stuff in one agenda item, which I'm glad, which I'm fine with. This has been a long time coming. And I mean, this is, now, are we still planning this plan? Does this still have the, the new back-end diagonal parking? Is that part?
No.
Still in the plan? We took that out?
Parallel parking.
Parallel parking, yeah. Okay, all right.
I did not see in the list any pavers.
No, you did not.
That's a beautiful thing, okay. Because I would not approve that. The other thing that sticks out still is we're using a lot of modules. How are we doing? There's two of them out here on the library property that have been chopped down. They're awfully expensive to start with. We do lose them periodically. Why are we continuing to use modules?
Well, the situation with how healthy they can be is evolving, and we're learning more about, you know, the infection rate that we're getting. I think over time, you'll see that we are using less of them to create continuity between Phases One, Two, and Three. We're proceeding with them at this time.
As the Vice Mayor said, this has been a long time coming. So I'm excited about that. But I also want people to know that in the interim during the process, it is very disruptive.
Yes, and I have the full support of the CRA and their team that's going to help us communicate with the adjacent owners, tenants, and residents. And we are certainly blessed to have a bilingual staff member on engineering who has utilities experience. And I'm really not sure how I would have approached this without him. And then we also have, of course, other people who just, you know, basic, less technical Spanish-speaking abilities that we're going to be utilizing so that we have regular meetings. We're going to be approaching anybody impacted one by one as we're creeping down the street, how we're doing this. So it's going to be enormously impactful, and we understand that. And we have been preparing for months and months about how it is we can lessen that and mitigate it.
And I also want citizens, if they see this price tag, you can get sticker shock. There are a lot of departments involved in this process. There's a lot of infrastructure underground that needs to be replaced. So this is not just streetscape.
No, most of the money is underground.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Consent?
Yes.
Six point eight.
Award a construction contract to TLC Diversified, Inc. of Palmetto, Florida, for invitation to bid 09-0024 UT Marshall Street Water Reclamation Facility Digestor Demolition in the amount of $1,599,400. Approve supplemental two work order with Engineered Record, Arduro Group, Inc. in the amount of $100,629.50, increasing the work order from $137,170 to $237,799.40, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Brown?
Excuse me, Jeremy Brown, Engineering Manager for Utilities. There are two digestors at the Marshall Street Water Reclamation Facility. One of them's really old, so we're going to take that down and make room for a future equalization tank. That's, that's the item before you today.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Councilmember Beckman?
So can you explain what digester demolition is? What is a digester? How are you going to demolish and dispose of it? And are there any risks to Stevenson Creek there? Are you going to rebuild a digester, bring a new one in? I don't even know what, it doesn't sound pleasant.
You don't want to dig.
But I do like to learn.
We can bring you over and show you if you like.
Yeah, well, I could plug my nose, go ahead.
They're, they're a significant part of the wastewater reclamation process. And what they do is just what they say. There's, there's microbes in there, and they digest the waste, the organic material. They release biogas and produce biosolids. Biogas is primarily methane that gets sent over to a flare.
Yeah.
The contents will be disposed of with applicable rules, regulations. It's important to us to move this to, to demolish this digester because we have plans for a future equalization tank. And that is basically a big tank that when there's a lot of rain event or a lot of flow, the extra flow will go into the tank and kind of dampen the process, so there's a consistent stream going through the plant. I'm not sure if that answered your question, but yeah, digestors, they're, they're, they play a major role in producing the biosolids that, producing the biosolids.
So do you drain it, like let it dry out, and then take it apart and haul it away? And then you're going to bring that new thing in there to replace it?
They're not one, they're not in the same project. One is just to get the digester out of the way.
Okay.
And so there are contents inside of it. It's more of a sludgy material. It's liquid, right? There's some solids in there. And so our contractor is going to be draining that, and then they're going to be bringing it off. They're going to probably, they're going to try to de-water as much as they can, and then they're going to ship the solids part off to a, a disposal facility that's going to take care of it.
But the, the area around it is protected? All that stuff is going to contaminate?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. We're going to put in the same, same controls that we normally do with any project We're going to put in the same, same controls that we normally do with any project to prevent the, any environmental impacts. There is, I, I, we have full, you know, I don't see any reason to, to sound an alarm or make a.
Or worry about it?
Yeah, worry about it.
How long will it take to do all that?
I think we've got about a hundred and fifty days scheduled, if I believe, for this particular project. And again, when, when we're done, it's just going to be, we're going to level back off, plant some grass, and it's just going to be a spot basically right now. And then there's a separate project that's designing a future.
To replace it?
Equalization tank, yeah.
Other questions? Consent? Yes. Seven point one.
Thank you.
Provide direction on a proposed two-tier approval process for allocating the public amenities incentive pool in the downtown. Ms. Fisher.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. At your request, staff has evaluated ways to increase allowable density and/or intensity in the downtown core character districts in accordance with increases by Ford Pinellas back in October of two thousand and nineteen. Ford Pinellas updated the countywide rules for the urban center activity center to allow cities who have that specific designation to increase up to eight point O F A R, a density of two hundred units per acre, and a density of three hundred and thirty rooms per acre for hotels. To do this, actually, right now, only Clearwater and St. Pete have that particular activity center. To do this and increase our maximum development potential, we would need both Ford Pinellas and the Board of County Commissioners approval. And it depends on implementation of multimodal transportation systems that would actually support that kind of density. So staff met with Ford Pinellas staff in January of two thousand and twenty-one to discuss options to incentivize development in our downtown. The increase would be challenging and premature, and this is primarily because we don't have an adopted multimodal plan. There's no county funding for investment corridors, and there's unclear funding commitment for transportation multimodal projects to support this additional development potential that we would have. So then we were, we were asked to look at other options in order to incentivize additional density and intensity in our downtown core. Other ways we could do this, we actually have an approved mechanism now. This is our existing public amenities incentive pool. We have additional floor area and units that are allocated for the provision of fees and or fees in lieu of certain public amenities. It's a negotiated process, and this is done through our community development board. It's available to all downtown properties. To date, this was actually implemented in two thousand and four. To date, it's been largely underutilized. And currently, as you can see from the numbers up there, we have over two thousand units available and more than two million square feet of non-residential. So then we started looking at what other communities do in order to incentivize development, particularly in their downtowns. We examine the codes of St. Petersburg, Orlando, Tampa, and Fort Lauderdale. Each uses different variables and conditions to allocate their units. For instance, some might calculate F A R differently. Some have additional parking requirements, or they have exemptions for specific uses. So none were an exact match to what we do here in Clearwater, but all provide for specific bonus for a specific community or design improvement. Some of these common criteria are, for instance, affordable or workforce housing, green building practices, design standards, historic preservation, preferred uses that they want in those areas, and improvements or fees in lieu for public amenities. Generally, there's a streamlined, streamlined staff review process when those criteria are very specific, and then when they're more subjective, or if you want a greater intensity or density, it's a more of a negotiated process that's typically done through the So this is what staff's recommending, is to modify our existing process for the existing pool program. There would be a tier one. In this tier one process, it would be a streamlined staff review. Projects would come in specifically in the downtown core character district where we want most of our higher urban compact development, and offer a more definitive bonus that's based on some sort of quantifiable predictable criteria. This density could increase above that base maximum density that we have now, and then stack as you add additional layers of bonus criteria. Tier two would be the existing process. It would remain an approval by the community development board. It would be a negotiated process, and that, again, would apply to the entire downtown district. The maximum density and intensity is based on this negotiated process. In total, neither could exceed that county maximum density or intensity provision and would depend on the units and the square feet that are actually available in that So these are some established, well-defined criteria that we were going to put out there for you to consider. As you can see, these practices are some of the ones that, some of the communities that we looked at also use. For instance, workforce housing, affordable housing, lead certification or an equivalent contributions to planned public amenities, so if we have a plan in place that actually calls out for public improvements, you could pay for those. Mixed use projects where we know we want to incentivize some long-term rental, hotel use, but that hotel use would have to have some sort of a public function space so that we would get more out of it for public use. And good design practices, for instance, not needing to apply for flexibility. These are just suggestive criteria, obviously, and represent just some aspects of sustainable building design, affordability, accessibility, and a mix of uses that support a better live-work environment for our downtown. To kind of explain how the process of stacking would be, if you had today's base density, which would be seventy-five dwelling units to an acre in that downtown core, if you were to also implement a mixed use of rental, you'd get an additional thirty-five dwelling units to an acre, and then perhaps you add a public parking in there, you could get a total of thirty-five for that, and so you'd have a total of one hundred and forty-five. Now, we also compare project data of several other recent downtown developments that also utilize the pool, and most of those density increases were modest. So we wanted to make sure that whatever we allow through this bonus program wouldn't exceed and current densities where it would be totally out of character with existing development in the downtown. So we're kind of, we're proposing that we set a maximum bonus density as well so that you could stack up to a certain height. And as you see in the chart there, those are what we would suggest, residential being one hundred and fifty, which would double what we have today. The hotel would be one hundred and ninety again, a little more than doubling, ninety-five, doubling, and then the non-residential would be six point O F A R. This would ensure that we don't use up all of our existing pool on one large development project, and we would also need to make sure that the infrastructure is in place to support that additional development. Allocation, allocation would continue to be on a first-come, first-served basis at the time of development permit approval, and any expired allocations would then go back into the pool. Obviously, those, those pool units are finite. When they're used up, they're used up. However, let's say that the, the density is used up first, and we still have a lot of square footage. What we use today is a conversion process so that you could take that square footage and actually use it towards additional dwelling units. And so we have a process to do that. It's called intensity equivalencies. One of the other things that we want to propose is a waiver of proportionate density-intensity allocation for vertical mixed-use projects. And what this would be is, right now, if, if you go up in your F A R, it has to be balanced out with your density for the residential. What we want to do is be able to allow both to maximize. This would apply to throughout the downtown. So with next steps, the city has already taken many steps to promote redevelopment in the downtown, and we do have a tool in our toolbox now to incentivize higher-density development where it's appropriate. So with council direction, we will prepare amendments to the redevelopment plan and the development code to reflect these proposed changes, and this change would allow developers to benefit from a streamlined predictable process while the community benefits from a more accessible, sustainable development project. So with that, thank you for your consideration. I look forward to hearing your direction.
Questions? Comments? Councilmember Albrecht?
Yeah, when the county went to a higher density, you know, their development plan, I was wondering why Clearwater didn't catch up and approve it. And at the review of the, I think Ford Pinellas, and you, you just mentioned it, the, we had some things that needed to be fixed first. How long will this? I mean, I think some of the things we have on the horizon, you know, that are going to be fixed, is this something that's an interim step, or is this going to be?
We believe this would be an interim step until the multimodal plan could be put in place, and there's additional funding for those transit and transportation proponents that would allow for that higher density.
Yeah. Because my concern was, you know, if we're going to be attracting developers downtown, we want to make sure that we're at the same level as everybody else, and, and so it's a good thing. Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Councilmember Beckman?
I, I like the way this sounds. I'm just, I just had a question of how does it fit in with the comprehensive plan work that we're doing? Is this in the middle of it, before it, in conjunction with it?
So we are currently doing other downtown amendments at the same time to kind of give a little more flexibility and clarity to those sections of the code, and we envision this going right in place with it. So we're looking at, retro direction, obviously, bringing this back within the next few months. The comp plan is, you know, two-year process, which we're only six months into it. So this will precede all of that.
Okay.
I like that we're doing two-tier. I think giving incentives is the right way to go about it rather than giving it by right. I think we want to try to push for the right development. I think density is a dirty word in Florida, but when you talk about transportation and making it work to play downtown, it makes a lot of sense. If we do have certain densities, then you can get more public transit, and it works. That's one of the challenges Florida has, we're just spread out. And so it doesn't work, and I want citizens to understand that's one of the reasons that we're looking at this. And with the new PSDA depot, it's still sitting on the CSX right-of-way, which I believe has potential down the road, because CSX does not want to be in Pinellas County anymore. So I think this additional density and intensity makes sense, and I think the way that the staff has gone about it is the right way to do it. So I fully support the direction that you are going. Other questions or comments?
No. I would agree with, I would agree with what you said. You know, this is, I think the increase, as you say, density is a bad word, a dirty word, but I think the increased density is going to give us a lot more opportunity as well, so this is, this is good, and I look forward to this moving forward.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Very good presentation. Item seven point two.
Approve the annexation, initial future land use map designation of residential low, and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential district for seventeen seven St. Croix Drive, and pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading. Mr. Guevara.
Good morning. Diego Guevara, Planning and Development. This voluntary annexation petition involves a zero point one fifty-two acre property consisting of one parcel of land occupied by a single-family dwelling. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste service from the city. The property is located within an enclave and is contiguous to existing city boundaries by the east and west. It is proposed that the property be assigned a future land use map designation of residential low and a zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential. The applicant has paid the city sewer impact and assessment fees and is aware of the additional cost to extend the city sewer service to the property. Collection of solid waste will be provided by the city of Clearwater.
Any questions? Councilmember Beckman?
I got a question about this one. This stuck out to me a little bit because it says, "The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive solid waste service from the city, but they're going to get water and sewer is from the county. It's not readily available." So are they on a septic system, and they just simply want to be annexed so they can get our trash collection?
They have water from the county.
Okay.
And they are requesting solid waste and sanitary sewer, but the sanitary sewer is not, is, is, is available.
Right. So the.
So they are getting sanitary sewer and solid waste from the city.
Does that answer your question?
I'm okay.
Okay. Seven point three.
Approve the annexation, initial future land use map designation of residential urban, and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential district for eighteen eighty-one Montclair Road, and pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading. Mr. Brotherton.
Thank you. Kyle Brotherton, Planning and Development. So this case involves one parcel of land totaling zero point six four two acres, and the property is occupied by a single-family dwelling. The owners of the property are requesting annexation in order to receive solid waste and sanitary sewer service from the city. The closest sanitary sewer line is located in the adjacent Seaton Drive right-of-way, and the applicants have not paid the required sewer impact or assessment fees at this time and are aware of the additional cost to extend to that city sewer service. And then upon annexation, solid waste will be provided by the city.
Any questions?
Okay. Just, again, just for clarity. So a house can be annexed in, but they don't have all of our services, water, sewer, and trash.
Correct.
So they can just, whatever is available, but if, if, if getting them off a septic, if water and sewer is available, they must take that, right? We're not having people annex into the city and stay on a septic system if, if sewer is available.
If sewer is available, yes. We do have the option, I believe, to make them connect. I don't know if we've kind of enforced that, but we do, if it's available, we would definitely like them to connect.
Or they're required?
No, we, I don't know if our sewer.
Well, that's.
I don't think we can compel them upon annexation, but we do have incentives. Is that correct? I don't see any leaking up there.
Because isn't the goal to get people off of septic systems?
With the voluntary annexation, you're not going to typically find anyone annexing to come into the city that's not looking to replace their septic system unless they're in an area where they can't get it and they want our solid waste service. So I don't think you're really going to run into the issue that you're talking about, but my understanding is that if there's sewer service in front of your property and you don't use it, you could be charged for it.
Okay.
So there's built incentives to hook up.
But at least, as you noticed, at least one of these does not have sewer available, so they will remain on septic until sewer is available.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Eight point one. Thank you.
Approve Clearwater Airport twenty twenty master plan update. Mr. Chesney.
Good morning. Ed Chesney, Marine and Aviation. Today, I'm going to ask you to approve the airpark master plan update that council accepted a cooperative funding grant in two thousand and eighteen. This was a hundred thousand dollar effort that was paid for eighty percent by the Department of Transportation. Before we get into the specifics of the plan, I want to talk a little bit about the airpark itself and take us back to the year two thousand, which is when the first master plan was implemented. Prior to two thousand, the airpark was a general fund operation. Today, it is an enterprise fund, and it's completely self-sustaining. A few facts about the airpark that some of the viewers might not recognize is that last year, the airpark celebrated its ninetieth birthday. So it's been around for a long time. And at one time, the airpark occupied the entire parcel of land that now incorporates the landings area. So that was up until the mid nineteen fifties when the golf course development came in, and the airpark now maintains its existing footprint. But I have old aerials that show runways that crisscross the landings golf course. So a lot of people don't realize that, and when the redevelopment for the landings came up, there were people that said, "Why doesn't the airpark take over the landing?" So a lot of pilots liked that idea. Another interesting fact about the airport is that it is on one of the highest elevations in Clearwater, at seventy-one feet above sea level. And the reason that's important is that most coastal airports are on the water, and they're subject to flooding, and they're in high coastal flood zones. So the Department of Transportation appreciates Clearwater Airpark because it is so high and dry, so much so that the Coast Guard, who is stationed at Pi, comes to us during evacuation events and positions some of their assets there should the storm be a problem. So we have agreements with them to do that. Is, is just recent hurricanes Irma and Maria, the airpark was instrumental because a lot of the big airports were out of service in the Caribbean, Puerto Rico, and the bigger planes couldn't get in there for aid. We had a lot of these smaller planes that could still leave Clearwater and do relief efforts in the islands and then bring people back to the states. It's a big evacuation airport from South Florida for people that are bringing their planes and families out of the danger areas and refueling in Clearwater. So I wanted to point those things out and then talk about when we did start the master plan process in two thousand, there was a reason for that. The state had a master plan for all airports. Clearwater didn't have one until two thousand, so we started that process. And since that time, we have added things to the airpark, and I'll just go over a short list because it's a list that cost millions and millions of dollars to implement, and there are things that we would not have if we had to fund them ourselves because they were all paid for eighty percent by the, by the state. So after the implementation of the master plan, we installed new taxi runways and pads. We installed two brand-new T-hangers in two thousand and two. We installed video equipment, security, fencing, electric gates. We extended the south runway two hundred feet as a safety overlap and a landscape burn that kind of separated the south end from Gilbert Street there in that neighborhood, which the, the people enjoy today. Two thousand and four saw the first corporate hangar built at the airpark. Two thousand and five, we installed the current portable terminal, which was never intended to be there for sixteen years. It's simply a, a double-wide trailer, if you will, but we are still using it. Two thousand and eleven, we saw our second, second corporate hangar be built. And then in two thousand and thirteen, we extended our runway to six hundred, we extended it by six hundred feet to the current runway length of just over four thousand feet. And that's important for planes coming in and having too short of a runway, landing early, touch and goes, whatever, whatever the situation is. Two thousand and fourteen, we installed our AWAS system, which is an automatic weather station. And we also are home to the Civil Air Patrol and the Tampa Bay Veterans Alliance. So there's a lot of, a lot of things happened at the airpark over the last twenty years with the master plan, and there are things in the original master plan that were never built. Right now, we are building Hangar C, which is the oldest hangar at the airpark, and it's under construction now. That is one of the projects that was left from the original master plan. Now talking about the new master plan. The new master plan was developed by aviation experts with AECOM, and they are looking at the airpark through their eyes. So they are proposing a lot of things to take the airport into the future, safety things, growth things. There's a lot of things in the new plan that people will say, "Do we really need this at the airpark?" the airport? And I would say, no, nice to have, but we don't need it. But the reason they're in the plan is because if something's not in the plan, it's not eligible for funding. So there are things that will never be built, and approving the plan today does not approve any project in this plan. Each project will come back as a standalone to the council for approval. We will base that on the needs of the airport, the concerns of the neighborhood, and the citizens of Clearwater. So I wanted to, you know, before we take questions, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that by approving this today, we are approving concept plans and we have a plan that we can rely on and that the state has reviewed using FAA guidelines and have blessed. And now as we approve this, we are eligible for the next twenty years to implement things. And, and the plan has things, they talk short-term, long-term, midterm. So right now, we're looking at, at short-term needs, and though some of those needs are still infrastructure-related. We have some old facilities out there that we're updating. We have runway, just like we pave our streets, we have to pave runways and taxiways. So those are the things we're looking at right now. We just, I just brought you a grant previously for some fire systems out there. We're improving the fire capabilities at the airport. The state is funding that because they're funding the infrastructure out there. It's, it's helping their investment, so we'll put a loop system in there and have a, a new fire hydrant available. So I have Mike McDonald here, he's our Marina Aviation's Operations Manager, and he deals kind of day-to-day with the airport, you know, more so than I do. So he's available if you have any questions, but I'll probably ask you if you have any questions about the plan so I can take a break from speaking.
Questions for Mr. Chesney. Vice Mayor.
Not really a question, I think, uh, you know, the, the airport truly is a vital asset to our city. But, uh, because I can remember, as you mentioned earlier, alluded to earlier, in my very young youthful days, being out at the Little League fields, there were planes that would fly right over the Little League fields coming in to, for landing or takeoff because of the crossing runways they had out there. And then they eliminated, eliminated the east-west runway when they built the landings. But, uh, it, uh, you know, it has become a, as you said, it has become an enterprise fund for the city, and I think that's a great thing. And, uh, you know, every dollar we've ever spent out there has returned much more, given us a heck of a return on our investment. So I'm, I'm very pleased with where we are on it.
Other questions? Councilmember Beatty?
I just wanted to say thank you for your presentation. You always do such a nice job with a little historical perspective and answering questions and making it really clear and easy to understand, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I just had one question, did, because I, I was at one of the recent airport advisory board meetings, did you share this with them or get any input with them, or has that been done, or if it's been twenty years ago, you might not, you know?
Well, the, yes, we, we did, um, this was a year effort, this master plan process. So with the quarterly meetings, every quarter during that year, AECOM did a presentation to the board to get their input and suggestions.
Okay.
So we, we did do that, they were involved at, at all levels. And then with, you know, Corona came in, so this kind of was put on ice for a while, but it, it is back. And we, and I shared it with the new board, we've got a lot of new board members, but when our first meeting came back, I brought this up again because they, there were two or three new members that were not part of the original master plan process.
Okay, that's good, because there were a bunch, there were a lot of pilots on that board and people that are there every day.
Yes, most of them.
Yeah. All right, great, thanks.
Just a couple of questions, Ed. First of all, you know, you talk about going from twenty-five to a hundred and four parking spaces? I didn't see on the diagram where those are proposed.
Let me see, I think they are out front of where the...
Maybe substantial delta.
Yeah, the, the existing, um, the existing terminal building there where we have the, there's a lot of open space, there were some trailers for the Civil Air Patrol.
Right.
It is in that area where there is expansion, expansion opportunities. Those portable trailers won't be there forever, and that is valuable land that we allow there now. So again, the growth study talks about increase in parking, but I can't say exactly where they'll all be at this point right now.
Okay. And then you talk about reserving the seventy-five acre landing site for aeronautical and non-aeronautical purposes. What are the purposes?
Right now, the, the only purposes that we would really look at would be some sort of easements. You know, the airport likes to protect itself, so other airports around there get easements over vacant land or land to, so they don't get the, the high development. When we were talking about this master plan, one of the, the issues that AECOM said, well, why don't we just expand the airport? So that was not the, um, the idea of the master plan to expand the airport. We, we dealt with the airport and its existing footprint, and we talked about ways that we could make it safer. So development onto the landings was really talking about preserving some of that area as buffer and easements for, if there was some sort of an accident or, or problem and you had to land on the, the golf course, it would be better than landing on a neighborhood, for example. So that was, that's the intent of that.
Okay, and one of the things that you said I think is critically important, this is a master plan, but this does not approve any specific projects.
Yes.
All of those will be coming back to us. So I know some citizens can look at the master plan and you said not everything in this will be done, uh, but that they can weigh in on specific projects as they come for funding.
Yes, that's, that's very important, and, and a lot of people realize that because I say it all the time, to, you know, please understand this is a master plan, it's at ten thousand foot, uh, what the airport could be, and the airport will grow as Clearwater grows and as council and the city wants it to grow.
And occasionally we get people that would like us to shut down the airport, and I always tell them about the obligations that we have based upon grants that we've taken from FDOT and other...
Yes.
Organizations, right?
Yes, and, you know, to be honest with you, we don't get that many complaints to shut it down. We had, you know, there's one or two squeaky wheels out there, but, um, they've been pretty quiet lately, so I'm, I'm glad about that.
Not on Easter. So, okay.
Not on Easter.
Any other questions, consent?
Yeah.
Eight point two.
Approve a license agreement for the Clearwater Marine Aquarium Island Estates slips and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying, Mr. Chesney again.
Okay, this, this item is a license agreement for the Clearwater Marine Aquarium, and I'm going to put, if this thing is, um, hopefully, I can see the, my image here, but...
We've got it.
Is that, okay, great. What we're looking at here is a image of the aquarium during construction, so the big tank is gone, and you can see the slips that surround the aquarium and the red lines, those are easements that the city has, right-of-access easements to the city docks and some water easements and other type easements. So for the benefit of the viewers, people would say, why does the city have all of these docks that surround the aquarium? The reason that is, is because the city owned all of the real estate that is now the aquarium, and that site was the former wastewater treatment plant for island estates when it was built. Sometime later, when island estates sewage all was put under the harbor to Marshall Street, that land sat vacant for a while until the Clearwater Marine Institute came in, and then now it is known as the Clearwater Aquarium. So that's why we're there, and that's why we have the access easement. So we refer to these as slips one through forty-three, there's not forty-three slips there because some are gone, and this was developed a long time ago, they're old wood concrete piling fixed slips, much like the Beach Marina, and they are in need of a lot of improvements, and my department maintains those slips. The aquarium has always used slips one through twenty area, and they currently pay about thirty-five hundred dollars a month in slip rent. So over the past three years, since the aquarium has rebuilt and is now open, you can see the same image, and the largest part of that building is where slip twenty would go and then go all around to slip one where the parking structure is. So that, it's been under their control for about three years because it was in their construction footprint. So now construction is complete, the aquarium is turning those slips back over to the city, and they need some repair. The aquarium would like to see some repairs that the city would not normally put at this location. The location is severely limited, it only has nine parking spots allocated to it, the amenities are not there, there's not water or electric at every slip. So it's kind of been, the history of these slips, they were used by the old Ross Yacht Repair Company, which was there, now Quality Boats is there, Quality Boats rents a lot of slips from us, the ferry has, their three ferries are stored there. So I envision this site as moving some vessels from the Beach Marina, certainly during reconstruction, and the city has vessels at the Beach Marina that are better stored here, making available premium slips at the beach rather than not keeping my workboat or my barge or my other vessels there. So I'm going to move in the city vessels here. The aquarium has proposed to make some improvements to that, to the slip area that they're renting, and they've asked to do these improvements over ten years. Once the improvements are done, anything they put there will be on city property, and we will own the, those assets as they're putting it, putting, putting them in. So I'm in support of the aquarium's proposal to do this. I think it's going to be the better fit for the city. The city does not have, the, the Beach Marina Fund does not have money to reinvest and rebuild those docks. We are building and keeping the west side up to date, but that east side is the, is the area that I'm asking you to approve these license agreements to let the aquarium move forward.
Questions for Mr. Chesney. Consent?
Yep.
Nine point one.
Thank you.
Our question for Mr. Chesney, always.
Stella?
Oops.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was out of here.
This is really not specifically about, about this one, but how are we moving forward on the derelict vessels? I know that, uh, FWC has made, I guess, made an agreement with Clearwater Police. Are we going to be taking care of some of those derelict vessels that have been along the causeway there soon?
I don't think there's an agreement with FWC. I know that we have a, um, Clearwater Police with our input has brought a DiveCom, the vendor, to, to remove derelict vessels as we see fit. That doesn't mean that we're going to remove every derelict vessel because that's at a cost to the city. Most of the ones that, along the causeway now are in the process, process has been started on removing those because it's a long process. So this, this agreement allowed us a vendor, and it's the same vendor that the county uses with the, the vessel program. So when those vessels along the causeway or on Mandalay Channel, wherever they're, they're deemed derelict, are removed, ICOM will remove them through FWC, through the county. We're going to be, we couldn't use the county contract, that's why we, we thought we could piggyback, but if we had a need to tow something, something was at risk, that was when we would use these, uh, this contract that the Clearwater Police recently brought forward to you. We could do it, we, we don't have to wait for their derelict, we could tow them if they're at risk or a storm blew them into a private property or into a city property. So it's not, I don't want people to think that it's us now taking over the derelict vessel removal that the state does, it is not that.
There's one sailboat that's been up against the causeway for a couple of years now that's, I was just wondering when that was going to be finally resolved.
Yeah, I don't think it's been a couple of years, it might be a year, because we had at one time, not too long ago, had all of them removed along the causeway, and I said, can you imagine, look, there's no boats out there? And now, as soon as I said that, there's, there's one, and that one was thrown up during a very high tide, so it doesn't even come back. We haven't had a tide like that, 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 you know, it's, it's lodged up there. But that's one that's in process with FWC, so we would then involve ourselves in something that's already in process. So I'm not sure we would do that unless there was some overwhelming reason to do so.
Okay.
Hope that answers your question, but...
Thank you, Mr. Chesney.
All right.
Nine point one.
Authorize a purchase order to Icon Supply, Inc., DBA Icon Technologies of Tampa, Florida for Yaskawa variable frequency drives and an annual not-to-exceed amount of two hundred thousand dollars, with the option for two one-year renewals of the city's discretion pursuant to invitation to bid twenty-one dash twenty-one Yaskawa variable frequency drives, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying, Mr. Gardner.
Hi, good morning, Mayor and Council, Rich Gardner, Director of Public Utilities. The honor before you today is for the award of a contract for Yaskawa variable frequency drives, or VFDs, for the water and wastewater systems. The VFDs are used to control the speed of pumps and blowers used in plants and lift stations. The VFDs help reduce power requirements and allow the units to run at a more consistent rate than other controllers. There was one respondent to the request for bids, and we're recommending award to Icon Technologies in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. This is a one-year contract through May twenty, twenty twenty-two, with the option for two one-year renewals. I'm asking for your approval to award, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
First of all, congratulations as a new director.
Thank you.
Uh, any questions for Mr. Gardner?
No.
Councilmember Beatty?
One little question, why, why do you think there was only one respondent? I mean, is this highly specialized, or is that why?
So we've been buying them, uh, one-offs through quotes, and we were getting three quotes, but when we went out to bid through the bid process, we found out there's only one, um, authorized representative in the state of Florida for these units, and that's who the one respondent is.
So does that mean we're now cutting out the middleman and getting a better price?
I hope we're getting a better price because now they have a, a contract, but I think they are the middleman, Icon, they're the local representative.
Consent?
Yes.
Ten point one.
Approve a purchase order to NRC Gulf Environmental Services, Inc. of Fort Worth, Texas, to pump, transfer, and dispose leachate from the solid waste transfer station in the annual not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, with two one-year renewal options at city's discretion pursuant to invitation to bid, number thirty-one dash twenty-one, pump, transport, and dispose of leachate, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying, Mr. Far, oh, and Mr. Farther down here.
Change, change. Good morning, Earl Gloucester, Director of Solid Waste General Services. This contract is just what it says it is. We have a fifteen thousand gallon holding tank at our solid waste transfer station. The leachate flows from the tipping floor down to this tank, and periodically it needs to be pumped, transported, and disposed of. Questions?
Any questions? Consent?
Yes.
Ten point two.
Approve a debris management contract with Crowder Gulf Joint Venture, Inc. of Mobile, Alabama, for disaster debris collection, reduction, and removal services, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying, Mr. Gloucester again.
This contract replaces previous vendor that we had to perform these services after a storm or after some other kind of catastrophic event to remove debris from our rice-away streets, where have you, within the city. Also covers, uh, management of debris management site, which you may recall from the twenty-seventeen storm was maintained at the Joe DiMaggio parking lot. Questions?
Questions? Consent?
Yep.
Eleven point one.
Authorize the city of Clearwater to join the state of Florida and other local governmental units as a participant in the Florida Memorandum of Understanding and Formal Agreements Implementing a Unified Plan and adopt the appropriate resolution.
Mr. Horr, you're in mistaken seats.
Yeah, I'm halfway through it, I realize. If I didn't would have stopped.
Works for me.
Okay.
So council, you'll recall back in two thousand and eighteen, the council authorized us to hire Motley Rice to investigate, litigate, and do what was necessary to follow any claims that we may have based on the opioid issue. In November of two thousand and eighteen, Motley Rice filed a complaint on our behalf, and they had been negotiating with various distributors, manufacturers, et cetera, and there are ongoing bankruptcies, as you have read in the paper. State of Florida also filed an action on behalf of a number of jurisdictions, well, the state and, um, a number of jurisdictions, they filed that in Pasco County. They filed that in Pasco County. So there's been ongoing negotiations in these cases. So out of that has come a memorandum of understanding called the Florida Plan. And the Florida Plan is a framework for unified settlement with the various companies, the various entities who are involved in the litigation, and the Florida plaintiffs. This unified plan was negotiated by the state with our attorneys and other involved attorneys. So this proposal that is before you has a framework for settlement and outlines a framework by which the city will recover some funds. There are three pots in this framework, pots of money. One pot is divided amongst the local governments, that's 15%. One goes to the state and the other goes to regional. We would get direct funds from the 15% pot that is meant to be divided amongst the local Right now, we have very vague numbers. These are just estimates. There is nothing guaranteed. This settlement could ultimately not happen. So this is a very preliminary step. The state is asking us to indicate our agreement to this format of proposal and this form of distribution. The payments will, could last as long as 18 years and will diminish over time as some of the settlements are proposed to happen early on and some of them over a long time, a long period of time. Right now, the number we're using for the city is 123,000 per year. That may not be a final number and it may well be lesser. It may not happen at all. So this is them asking us if we will agree. If we fail to agree, it impacts, if enough cities fail to agree, then it will impact the state's ability to negotiate a settlement and it will likely impact funds that we ultimately get anyway. The state does take the position and has had pending litigation, excuse me, pending legislation that did not pass this year but may be back to make it crystal clear that we cannot represent ourselves or obtain outside counsel in issues that they consider to be overriding public interest. So this is the proposal before us right now. It is preliminary. When we, if we get a final agreement, that agreement will come back to you. What you're approving really is the concept.
Questions for Ms. Aiken? Does not seem like we have really any latitude on this.
You really don't.
Okay.
We are a very, very, very small player in a very, very, very big.
Okay, we'll hear that further than on Thursday. Any questions on second readings, 11.2 and 11.3? Anything else, Mr. Horn?
No, Mayor.
Ms. Aiken?
No, sir.
Okay. I had asked Mr. Horn to add code enforcement as a topic. It is something that is important to me and I think I wanted to talk about it before we get to the budget this year. I think it affects the look of our city and I think it affects our neighborhoods, the quality of life throughout the city. And I would like to expend more money on code enforcement. I don't want to be too rigorous on residents, but I do expect them to keep their properties up to reasonable levels. And I think the best way to do that is code enforcement. Talked to Ms. Clayton and she certainly thinks that there is potential for some more inspectors. Do you want to come up, Gina? This is not something she solicited. So she wasn't asking for a larger department or a greater budget. It was something that, that I think is important as I drive around the city and look at different areas. And we hear oftentimes from citizens who have neighbors that they believe that our code enforcement could be a little bit more stringent and that these derelict properties are having a negative impact on other neighbors.
I would agree. We have a lot of those issues. I know that this is going to be a major topic at our strategic priorities meetings. So Mr. Horn has asked me to put together some cost estimates of increasing staffing and so I don't know if you want to wait until, I don't have all those numbers before me, but we have looked at increasing staff. Right now, we have 14 FTEs. We have nine zone inspectors. We have a manager. We have an inspection specialist and a sign inspector. So we're, we have some good resources. I think there's some opportunities to expand that. But I think with that also comes needs for additional supervisory kind of staff. So I'm going to defer to Mr. Horn about whether he wants to talk about any more specifics with increases because he and I haven't had that conversation yet. You know, there's a lot of issues out there and Ken Pizlak, our code enforcement manager is here who, if you have specific things we can address. I will say we do have challenges dealing with some properties due to due process issues, notice issues, and those sorts of things. And they are very time consuming and it's difficult to explain that to neighbors who are enduring whatever impacts that they're experiencing. Our focus really is on getting out and talking to people and when we see violations, encouraging the inspectors to, to make contact with the owners and explain to them, trying to get voluntary compliance. Ken, I don't know if there's anything you want to add, but he's here and available for questions.
Well, my hope was to find out if the rest of you feel the same way and that we can give direction, obviously, to staff. We don't have to finalize anything today, but you know, if I have the support of the rest of the council, that you're all interested, that's what I'm looking for.
Well, I've always been a, a very strong proponent of private property rights and private, you know, ownership rights. But the flip side to that is if you own a piece of property, you also have responsibilities. And I don't have a problem holding property owners responsible for maintaining their properties. I think that's, I, I'm, like I say, I've always been a strong proponent to be able to develop your property and do things with your property because it is your property. But the flip side of that is there's also responsible, there's a responsibility component to it that needs to be acknowledged.
I agree with that.
Council member back there?
I think it's a, it's an issue for residents. They talk about code, neighbors that have code violations and cars with moss growing on them out front and stuff like that. But my question would be, what's our collection rate? And so sometimes we hear of people coming before us that have $50,000 worth of accrued fines. And so part of code enforcement would be if they don't have to pay a fine, they're not going to be changing their behavior. So, so what's the collection rate and how many, you know, because if I'm writing $40 checks every other week, I'm going to get my property in order. But if they just add up and, you know what I mean? So I don't know if it's, if it's a problem on the collection versus code enforcement going out and writing citations or whatever.
So collection on residential property, particularly homestead property, is a very difficult issue. You cannot foreclose on homestead. And ultimately, the hammer with enforcing liens and fines on any property is foreclosure. We do take some properties to the court system and they, and that does not, they're not protected by homestead there if they have a fine. But when we have to do maintenance, et cetera, we have to go in, move and trim, that becomes problematic in collection. And there's not a lot we can do about that. Now, commercial properties do not have homestead protection. And we have begun foreclosing about a year and a half, two years ago. We select the properties where foreclosure can make sense. But it's, there is no easy answer because the Constitution protects people's homesteads against forced sale.
Can we do other things like, you know, this sounds awful, but you know, they can't register for parks and rec classes or things if they're in our system as having all these liens. Can we, you know, have some other kind of? No.
Well, we really haven't looked at, at other penalties.
Yeah.
Removing other city services if you are unable to maintain your property. We have not looked at that and I would be concerned about that, but we can, we can see if that has been done and we can take a look at it. So that would be for residential properties.
I mean, are there creative ways that other cities are doing things with accrued fines that?
I mean, honestly, as Pam said, we haven't researched that. We have recently, you all adopted a civil citation process. We're going to be implementing it. We were, I think, going to start writing violations this month with it, but it's still a long process. But we're hoping that maybe taking properties there where they have to pay the fees, the fees come to the city instead of the court and we can recite them and recite them if needed will help kind of move people into that direction. But it's, it's challenging. We also are going to be facing with, you know, some new challenges. We're not going to be able to accept anonymous complaints anymore due to Selva, Senate Bill 60. So clearly our inspectors are going to be doing a lot more pro enforcement than they have previously.
Yeah.
Come on up. How, how many people, once we cite them, comply with the issues? Is it 80%? 50%?
Probably closer to 70%.
So if we're citing more people that do have issues, at least 70% of the time, we anticipate that they're going to comply?
Yes, we will work, we work with them and it all works out without getting to the board or local ordinance violation court or the special magistrate. And we're also investigating at the same time, looking into the use of a collection agency possibly for some of this. Other counties and cities have gone that route. I don't know what the success rate is with that, but they, you know, if it can affect your credit rating, sometimes that can gain someone's attention.
So is that just harassment with a collection agency? It's just calling them or sending notices? Because you're saying we can't foreclose on them or anything or take them to court?
Or it depends upon what the property is. But if it's homestead, that's correct, we can't.
Yeah. Because isn't it already affecting their credit if they do a credit check?
No.
No? That you, it doesn't get documented that you didn't pay your fines from a city somewhere?
Well, it may get documented, but we don't report to credit agencies.
No. Wow.
Mr. Horn?
As you might suspect, this is not a new issue, not a new discussion. If you go back 20 years, when I became the manager, it was not uncommon for people to talk about our onerous code inspectors. That was not a very fun conversation. Council members would get that kind of feedback. Staff would then have to defend what they are doing and doing their jobs. So there've been several conversations where I have proposed to council, if you want to really get tough, we can get tough. All you got to do is tell me and pull the trigger. And I believe Councilmember for Vice Mayor Hamilton and the mayor remember some of those discussions. So after some thorough conversation, it was kind of decided that the compliance approach that code enforcement had been using, and by that I mean working with the property owner or the tenant, whoever the case may be, and trying to get compliance, that was always kind of felt that that was a, a better approach. So what I would like for you all to do, to think about as we have our next discussion is what, what is your feelings about the, the kind of warnings, the complex, the compliance warning? You know, we, our inspectors really try to use the max on the warnings and, and, but, but if you want us to get a little tighter on giving warnings, you know, that's something that we could certainly consider. Also, the ability to pay? There are some neighborhoods where I believe that, that, that tenants or property owners, you know, may not really have the ability to make the kind of investments we believe should be made for them to cure their problem. And so I, I think when you have this next discussion, you know, think about how, how you want us to manage through that. I'll, I'll point out one area that's very interesting is parking on the grass. There are a lot of neighborhoods where we have multiple people living in, in homes that don't have enough parking spaces on the street, so they park on the lawn. I can clearly imagine us, you know, citing them and then us getting a minor insurrection from the residents, you know, who will say, well, I, I don't have a place to park. And we really may not be able to help them with more public parking on the street. So there is a kind of a dilemma, you know? Part of that, I think, is just, you know, just the evolution within our community. So I think when we have that next discussion, we can reflect the tone and the focus because like the mayor said, you know, you know, he, he doesn't really want to be too onerous on the residents. But on the other hand, what does being less onerous look like? I mean, I think that's the kind of thing that inspectors would need to get the feedback. And oh, by the way, I did tell Gina that to get the conversation started, I doubled the number of code inspectors. And, and then we work back from there. So imagine now, if we did that, there is no question the city would feel a presence of code inspectors if we doubled their numbers. And the question is, how would, how would we handle that kind of feedback?
Well, you're going to get screaming. And there'll be one-offs that you'll hear about and you'll say, well, that doesn't make sense. You know, I mean, there's always a story behind every situation, right?
Of course. And one of the negatives is the more, the more aggressive we get with code enforcement, it, I don't want to use the word empower necessarily, but we start having neighbors reporting neighbors and then it creates a real, not, not a great relationship and not a great atmosphere in the neighborhood itself. So there, there's a very delicate balance to code enforcement, but it is, as I said, you know, property ownership has rights, it also has responsibilities. And it's, it's a delicate balance and I'm, you know, if we need to be a little more forceful with how we balance it, I'm, I'm okay with that. But I, I don't want to get to the point where we're, we're trying, we're pitting neighbor against neighbor and, and creating issues for law enforcement and everybody else.
Council member on.
So I, I like the, I like what code enforcement is doing now with helping resolve the issues and the problems and working with people. But I do think that once they get past that and there's a, can't get any further with it, that there should be something that, you know, we can't do a foreclosure necessarily for the worst cases, that maybe we should look into doing some kind of a, a credit score effect, you know, affecting the credit. Because right now, I'll tell you what, you can't do anything without, everybody looks at your credit score and affects the way you live, day on and day off. So might be something that might give us an extra tool in the box.
I think so.
Council member on. Go in there back there.
Well, the people who are living paycheck to paycheck get hit the hardest. And I hate to see fines start piling up for people that they're completely unable to pay and affect their credit report. So it's, it's a tough issue. I, I do think we need to help in some way rather than just punish.
Oh, I was going to say, do you expect that, I would kind of expect, but I don't know, a significant drop off on, in reports now that people do have to identify themselves? No anonymous complaints? I bet you're going to have a.
Yes, we do get a lot of anonymous complaints.
Yes, we do get a lot of anonymous complaints.
And I think we're not going to have happy residents because of that. You must leave your name, or we can't take action on it?
Well, you're, you're, you're pretty much driven by, I mean, anonymous complaints. I mean, that's what I was always told.
We're a complaint-driven system.
They do, they're, they're pretty good in their zones with their proactive enforcement. I would say, based upon what you see with violations going out, it's probably 50/50. It's as much proactive as it is called in complaints.
Mr. Horn and then Ms. Aiken.
There's another side to that, and Ken and I have, throughout the year, will team up and deal with a, a neighbor who is known as a frequent complainer and quite frankly, harassing their neighbors with their complaints. So there, so this law will, will mitigate some of that from some of the neighbors who just are filing complaints that we go and look and check, and they're not really valid complaints. So some of that noise will, will drop. But I do agree with you that some of the people that don't want to get into conflict with their neighbors will probably not call us and, and, and want their name to be known.
Ms. Aiken?
Over time, our, as the manager was saying, over time, our, and council's viewpoint toward code enforcement and liens has evolved tremendously. When I first came here, we would send once a year a collection letter out from the clerk's office where there were mowing and demo liens. And it was, the attitude 30, 40 years ago was, oh, when they sell the property, they'll pay it off. And there was not any aggressive action. And residents didn't expect aggressive action. They're, they would almost look at this as a free low-interest loan from the city to mow and demo property. And that doesn't happen anymore. I see your, your expression on that. But years ago, it was pretty wackadoodle. Over time, you guys have become, as a body, a little more stringent. And two years ago, we implemented a foreclosure policy on the, on the worst of the properties. Some of them are residential, although not homestead. And you've seen some of those people come up here and complain about our foreclosure activity. And also on commercial properties. Our goal has always been compliance. And typically, the ones you see in foreclosure, they're usually not in compliance. If they're in compliance, typically, there'll be a negotiation of a reasonable. So, but it's evolved, and you have become more stringent as a body because up until two years ago, we never foreclosed anything because council didn't want to. When you start foreclosing, when you start enforcing, when you start sending out letters that affects people's credit, you will get pushback.
Well, there's an easy way to avoid all of it. Take care of your property.
Take care.
And that's, you know, and maybe there's some people that can't take care of their property, and they need to think about alternatives. But it's kind of like talking about the short-term rentals. You know, people talk about the property rights of the people who want to do short-term rentals. Well, it affects other people who live in the neighborhood, and they also have property rights. And that's kind of where I come down on that issue and on a lot of our code enforcement issues. You know, when you don't take care of your property, you're affecting your neighborhood and your neighbors, and that's not right. So I think you're hearing that there's some support for some additional resources, and that we understand its fine line. So anything else on this? All right, item 14.2, council member advisory board attendance. And we talked about this about six weeks ago, I think, and so we're back again. I am concerned about council members going to board meetings because I think some of the things that have been said sound like direction. And I think we all agree on most things up here, but there are certainly some things we don't agree with. And, you know, I don't want different council members going to different boards and saying different things that they take as direction. And I think when you come as a council member or the mayor, you hold a different place in the eyes of those board members. It's inevitable. I just believe that's the way it is. And so it's concerning. The city attorney and I talked about it at length, and I think she's done some more research and has a refined viewpoint. Would that be a good way of saying?
Yes, and I can, I don't have it with me now, but, well, I don't have it for distribution now. What I did is go back and look at all of the advisory boards and the direction that the code has for them and what their role is and what they're supposed to be doing. And they all have, in their responsibilities, they report to the city council. They take direction from the city council. Actually, some of it still says commission because it's old, but it's still the city council. So this is not an area in which individual council members has authority to act. Now, so that just sort of sums it up. Each of the boards have different language. They all have some, one of them actually has an objective, but that's only one board. And that's, Environmental Advisory Board provides citizen insight to the city commission and staff on environmental activities within affecting the city. So as the mayor was saying, the, the direction comes from the council as a whole, and the advice back comes back to the council as a whole. If you want more reporting, then you ask for more reporting. Some of them have specific things that they're supposed to be advising and reporting on. But it, it is pretty clear that this is not a place where individual council members have the authority to give direction. Now, it's different than giving direction to staff, which you are prohibited by charter. But by ordinance, the direction comes to and from council.
So I would welcome us to have discussions about anything that we want to direct any of the boards to pursue. Or if we don't think that they're going in the right direction, that we can, you know, give that feedback as well. But I think from what Ms. Aiken has looked at, it is clear that we as individual members should not be approaching boards. Council, Vice Mayor?
I think, again, you know, after, having done this as long as I've done, I don't, I can't, I don't feel like, and I can't, I can't go to a meeting of an advisory board and sit in the audience and then look at me as a citizen. I'm being looked at as a council member because they know, they know who I am. So even if I have, you know, concerns as a resident, when, if I stand in front of them, it sounds like it's coming from a council member. I think our boards are given the, they're, they're there to be autonomous in what they do. They report to us, make recommendations to us, and when it gets to us, that's when we have the authority to agree, disagree, dismiss, or, you know, do whatever, take whatever action we deem necessary based on the recommendation. I think it used to be different in the old city hall. If I was in my office and there was a meeting going on of a, the community development ward or something, I'd walk across the hall and sit in the back row for a little bit and just kind of see what's going on. But I just, I've never felt as an elected official, the need to go to an advisory board meeting and have input. They're there to do their work autonomously and report to us. Maybe that's changing, and I, maybe, you know, the way I do it, it's not written anywhere that that's the right way to do it, but that's kind of my approach to it. So.
Ms. Aiken?
The other thing, the code in general provides that there will be a liaison with the boards. That liaison is appointed by the manager and is responsive to the manager. So you do have a liaison, and that liaison is through the manager, and each board does have one.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a comment.
Okay.
Since it's pretty much directed at me. So, you know, I, I'm, I understand that you're not comfortable with me attending advisory board meetings. I will say, I love attending advisory board meetings. I love to engage with people who are volunteering their time on a subject that they care about. I did get the message from our previous discussion that you didn't want me to be perceived as giving direction for board members. And so I've been, you know, pretty deliberate in stating that I'm, first of all, I thank the board members for being up here. And I'll tell you, 99.9% of the time, I'm the only one sitting out there. There's one person out there. There's a liaison, the board members, and me. And so I get up and, and thank them, and I listen to their discussion and what their agenda is. And, and I've been much more intentional in just letting them know what I'm looking at, what I'm working on, especially the Affordable Housing Advisory Board and the Environmental Advisory Board, and sort of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. But those are the three big ones that I really, you know, care about. And there's a lot going on, especially, you know, with affordable housing and me sitting on the continuum of care. And, and I've been, you know, I, I haven't said too much, but I am there to listen. And I do want to send the message to those residents who serve that I care about their service, and I want to know what tasks they've been given. Because to be quite frank, I think that there's a whole lot of talent on our advisory boards that could be utilized much more than a once-a-year-one-pager. So I do have a problem with a once-a-year-one-pager where they're supposed to advise us and we can act on it. And maybe that's something that we can look at as far as changing that. So, you know, if it's, makes anyone uncomfortable that I'm speaking during an advisory board meeting, then I won't, but I will certainly continue to attend and take notes. And, you know, if people who serve on advisory boards are my friends, which a number of them are, then I can certainly have conversations with them about articles I find or things that are going on in St. Pete or other municipalities. And, and, you know, we just share information about a common interest and passion. But I won't do it up there, and I won't give direction.
I don't have a problem with you going to the board meetings. The only reason I know you're going to the board meetings is I'm watching the board meetings and I see you there.
Okay, that's good.
And, and I think some of your comments are borderline direction. And, and it's fine, you have a point of view. We all have a point of view about every subject. And we care enough to be involved within the city. I don't mind attendance. It's when you start to talk to the board, in, in my opinion, has been direction. And I don't think in Naab it was as much, but it was still direction.
Can you give examples, like an example of direction?
Well, not only, questions that you're asking staff of what they're doing, which I think ought to be going through the city manager, rather than you being at the dais, speaking to Mr. Lane and the board members. I hate using this word. It's inappropriate. That's really what it comes down to. We have to know our roles.
Yeah.
And, and I am happy to have boards come and speak to us and give more reports, and we can ask questions, and then come back and give them direction as a body. A direction that all of us, or a majority of us, agree upon. But I'm going to give an example that I don't even believe in, but let's say, you know, I wanted to go to the Environmental Advisory Board. And my view was that solar has too long a payback, we shouldn't even be looking at it. Now, let me ask you something. Would you go bananas over that?
I'd want to see your documentation that you shared with them. That's, I wouldn't go bananas. Honest to God, I would not go bananas. But I would say, what did he share with you that supports that statement? That's all. It's a, is it?
My point is, it wouldn't be appropriate for me to do that. If, if we had a decision that was made amongst the governing body, and then we gave direction to the liaison to express that to the board, that's one thing. I am not upset by people going to board meetings or watching them or reading the minutes or anything like that. I think it's good, it's appropriate. I want our volunteers to understand that we value the time that they put into this, and it is significant for many of the boards. And that's one of the reasons we have the, you know, the advisory board appreciation dinner and other things. And I have board members that I talk to all the time about different things. But I am very cautious about giving them direction. And I, that's it. I mean, I don't want to belabor this.
No, it's fine. I won't speak too hard.
And I didn't even bring up your name. I just brought up the fact that I want to talk about it with the entire council.
Well, I know what's, you know.
I know you know that, but, and this is the way we have to have discussions.
Yeah.
So, anything else on this? Any items that anyone would like to have added to future agendas?
I have a question about, so we had Dr. Payne come and do a very thorough, thoughtful, intelligent presentation. And I thought you had said we were going to have a discussion on today's date, on our work session on that, but it wasn't on the agenda. Can you give me an update on what's going on with that?
Ms. Call?
It's on the agenda for the next work session, council meeting.
It's going to be the 17th, right?
Isn't today the 17th?
It was supposed to be the 17th, but I don't think, it said the direction really was for the actual council meeting, not a discussion date. And I was not aware if anybody had contacted the individual who is representing the one organization. So I was going to approach the city manager regarding that individual's seat, if somebody had contacted them to attend and provide feedback at the council meeting, if that was the intent.
So you're saying we had Dr. Payne come and have a full special meeting, and we are not going to discuss it? Except at a council meeting?
It's on the agenda for the next.
Work session. Okay, good. Work session. Yeah. Not, not a vote on the council meeting.
If council wants to, if council wishes to make a decision or provide some action on it, then it would go to the council.
Okay. I thought that was going to occur today.
It was, well, the way, when I heard the meeting, it was set for the second council meeting, and that's where my confusion was. And so that's why I needed to discuss with the city regarding, because I know there was a one individual who wanted to provide input. And if it's at a work session, there is no input.
Well, we also didn't have that one individual come and give feedback because it was a very, they have a position. And had we opened it up to everybody who has a position, whereas Dr. Payne was pretty much neutral and talked about the pros and cons of the different systems rather than, as he said, he couldn't advise what system to use, were we the pros and cons?
Okay, so the intention is, our next work session, we'll discuss that. And then at the, if we choose to move it forward, then that free vote or whatever that organization might be interested, they can speak at a council meeting for three minutes?
Yes.
So it's the 31st?
That's like, okay.
It's the first because it's.
The first, that's right. The Tuesday.
So it's June 1st is the work session?
Yeah. All right. Anything else? Okay, you've got a two hour and ten minute break. We are adjourned. We'll see everybody at two o'clock for a magic work session.